To the April 25th Radnor Township Board of Commissioners meeting, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first thing I want to note is that we had executive session before this meeting, from 5:30 to 6:30, where we discussed matters of real estate, personnel, and litigation. Next, we are going to move the election of President to after items two and three on the agenda. What we're going to do first is the distinguished unit citation for the Third Platoon, as well as the commendation of merit for the Police Department, and with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Colorulo.
Mr. President, if I may, prior to that?
Yep.
I'd ask the Board to consider removing items D and F off the agenda for this evening. I know that there is currently an issue regarding a tax issue in which this applicant is looking for forgiveness of tax, both for the township, the county, and the school district. I would ask, until that issue is resolved, this item be removed from the agenda and from the Board for further consideration from this time.
Well, I guess I'd look to the...
I'm inclined to keep it, sorry about that.
You want to move?
I have a...I know I have things that I want to communicate to the public about my opinion on the matter. I have nothing that I'm going to communicate regarding the appeal, but the substance of the zoning change, I have things that I'd like to communicate, so I'd like to keep it on the agenda.
I have plenty to communicate as well, but I would strike it for this meeting. We can talk about it next meeting.
All right, so is there a motion to strike it from the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? All right, no second, we'll leave it on. All right, Chief Colorulo.
As the Chief of Police, this is probably my favorite thing I get to do, is when we get to recognize our officers for doing a good job. It's even more rewarding tonight because we're recognizing officers from other departments that assisted us in helping the citizens of Radnor. What's a little disturbing, though, is one of the officers from Philadelphia is here with his mom and dad, and I work with his dad, so it goes to show you how old I'm getting and his father's getting. In fact, Sergeant Kopecky in the back, in 1995, and we had the 30 inches of snow, remember that? The only way I was able to get to work is Sergeant, then Detective Kopecky, had to drive down to South Philadelphia in a big Toyota pickup truck to pick me up because no other vehicle can come and get me, and that's how I got to work for two weeks, remember that? So, but without further ado, I'd just like to, first of all, call the following individuals to the front, and the first commendation we're going to give out is for the burglary that involves a lot of the officers from other departments. So I would ask, first of all, Lieutenant Andy Block from the Radnor Police Department, Sergeant Sean Dietrich is also on this incident, but he is away on vacation right now, Detective Jim Sanoguido, Detective TJ Schreiber. Interestingly also, Officer Brian Bell is not here, but his parents are here, because he's getting a commendation, which is wonderful, thank you very much, Mr. and Mrs. Bell. Officer Steve Ryan, Officer Kate Reardon, and Officer Dan Lunger was not here either, he is our canine officer that was instrumental in this. From the Upper Darby Police Department, Officer Francis Devine, in fact, I just thanked him because he's the one that actually chased the bad guy for me. And then from the Philadelphia Police Department, Officer Sergio Diggs and Officer Christopher And I'll just read this real quickly, this was on March 29, 2016, it was around 6:30 in the morning, and we received a call from the resident at 115 Ashwood Road, reporting that a burglary was discovered at the residence, and the vehicle was also missing. Members of the First Platoon responded to the residence, and they checked and cleared the house to make sure it was safe. While speaking with the wife, it was learned that she heard a noise at approximately 5:00 in the morning, but she thought it was her son. At 6:00 AM, she came downstairs, discovered her vehicle was missing. The family went through the first floor and discovered multiple items missing. Officers Lunger, Bell, and Ryan, while clearing the residence, located a black cellphone left by the actor who committed the burglary in the living room area. So it would be, I guess, a submission for World's Most Criminals again? Right? Officer Reardon obtained the stolen vehicle information from the resident, and had the vehicle immediately entered into the National Crime Information Center as stolen. Officers learned of the resident's iPhone and iPad were missing, and they used another family phone and application to do the "Search My Phone" application. Officers and detectives began tracking the missing devices. The application located the iPhone originally in the area of 57th and Walnut Street in West Philadelphia. Lieutenant Block and Detective Sanoguido were able to track the devices and the stolen vehicle, then into Upper Darby, Pennsylvania. That's when Upper Darby Officer Francis Devine located the vehicle and the perpetrator, based on the tracking, in the 6800 block of Clover Lane. So this guy was getting around, and he wasn't done his crime spree. Upon approaching the vehicle, the perpetrator fled the area, which resulted in a foot pursuit initiated by Officer Devine. The perpetrator was subsequently taken into custody at 62nd and Washington Avenue by Philadelphia Police Officers Sergio Diggs and Christopher Kopecky. Sergeant Dietrich, Detective Schreiber processed the crime scene, they recovered direct evidence placing the perpetrator inside the residence committing the crime. Therefore, it's resolved that these officers that we mentioned, Radnor, Philadelphia, and Upper Darby, are awarded the commendation of merit for their act of intelligence, valuable police service, and arrest through highly skilled performance that exemplifies the finest level of police professionalism in protecting the Radnor community. Thank you.
Thank you, officers.
This next one is a little disturbing, because we do have young children here, and this is something you never want to hear about, and you find it hard to believe when you hear about it and you still shake your head that any human being can do this, but it did have a happy ending. I'd like to call the following officers up on this one, would be Sergeant Mark Stancen, who has two daughters who are in the front row. You probably remember about a year ago, when Sergeant Stancen got promoted, he had his three daughters here, but I don't see the youngest one, I guess she's home with mom? Okay. Officer Nick LaFredo, Officer Jamie Metzler, Officer Stephanie Rock, Officer Ray Rodden, and Officer Leo Vogel. And I just want to also acknowledge, Stephanie is one of my rookie officers, she has about six months on the job. She made an arrest yesterday, we had this wonderful incident, the Wheels of Wayne, the library had an incident going on, they had the outdoor sales, and Stephanie made an arrest for a gentleman that was involved in videotaping inappropriately. And she caught him, and he was arrested, and he was arraigned this morning, so, nice job on that one. So, on Monday, March 7, 2016, members of Three Platoon were dispatched to the Regency Apartments, right behind the police station, to check on the well-being of a two-and-a-half-year-old male who was allegedly left home alone. Upon arrival, the responding officer, Gluck, Vogel, and LaFredo knocked on the door. The voice of a toddler responded and asked, "Who was at the door?" The officers identified themselves and asked the child to open the door. The door was locked, and the toddler had difficulty unlocking it. The officers retrieved the maintenance worker to open the door, while Officers Vogel and LaFredo stayed at the door, and the officers were eventually able to gain entry. Officer Metzler and Officer Rock arrived on the scene, and upon entry, they were met by the child, who was wearing a shirt, soiled diaper, and it was immediately confirmed that the child was in fact left home alone. Additionally, the apartment was being heated by the four burners on the stove top, and the child was living in squalor. In fact, myself and the Township Manager even arrived at the scene. Sergeant Stancen and his officers acted admirably, and the safety of the child became their first priority. They began to build a rapport with the child in an attempt to make him feel as comfortable as possible in what was a very confusing situation for the child. Officer Vogel and Officer LaFredo located a clean diaper and changed the child. Officer Metzler and Rock took the child to the police station and provided the child with food, so it's a lot more than just locking up the bad guy, as we say. The child remained in the care of the Radnor Police for some time, while children and youth services conducted their investigation and eventually took custody. Radnor Police investigated the incident, the entire Three Platoon, with the exception of Officer Rodden, was unavailable to handle other calls, and that's when Officer Rodden stepped up and showed a great amount of efficiency and aptitude by being able to handle all the other calls for service that were going on at the time. And Officer Rodden was even dispatched to an incident of a customer dispute in Wayne. Upon further investigation, on his own initiative, was able to determine that a theft had occurred, and as a result, charges were filed against the actor, and the arrest is pending. The patrol officers and sergeant of the Third Platoon who responded to this incident are to be commended. Notwithstanding the eventual charges which were filed related to this case, are attributed to Sergeant Stancen, Metzler, Vogel, Rodden, LaFredo, and Rock. These officers showed remarkable compassion and sensitivity to a young child who was not being cared for properly, and put his needs and safety first and foremost. I am very proud that the Three Platoon members of the Radnor Township Police Department are given this distinguished unit citation, congratulations. There is one other acknowledgement I need to make, and unfortunately, I don't have a citation or any kind of a plaque, but we did want to acknowledge Officer Metzler on another matter, and I'll get to that in a second. You know, I started here five years ago, a little over five years ago, and I remember when Jamie walked in here in plain clothes, as big as he is, and he was carrying his little two-year-old daughter. She's now seven years old, name's Emily. "Hey Emily, why don't you come up here?" And, "Bring your mom, Mara." Mara has something in common with our boss, because she's a big Flyers fan, so, you know. I remember the story you told me about the Ron Hextall jersey that got washed by your mom and ruined the autograph, so... But I wanted to acknowledge some outstanding work that Jamie Metzler did. About a little over a year and a half ago, he came to me, and he was supposed to work down in detectives for training, which we do to our officers every so often, but he got hurt a few years ago, and he never got a chance to fulfill that training obligation that he wanted, so he asked me to keep him in mind, and I did. And I did a little reluctantly, because we were busy and we were shorthanded on the street, but we figured there was never going to be a good time, so we might as well just put him in there and see what happens. And he got ribbed and teased by the detectives a little bit, but then he won their hearts over because of his work ethic, his enthusiasm, and his zest for the job. He did a remarkable job as a detective, and I really have to apologize, because I spoke to the Township Manager, and I spoke to the Commissioners, and I don't have a plaque or a citation to give your dad, Emily, I apologize. But what I can give your dad is a gold badge, because he's getting promoted to detective. So you could pin it on your post. upstairs on the second floor, so please help yourself, thank you. And thank you, Commissioners, I appreciate it.
Thank you, and thank you to the Radnor Township Police Department, the Philadelphia Police Department, the Upper Darby Police Department, all the Police Departments for all that you do, you all are top-notch, and we're lucky to have you, thank you. All right, so now we're going to move on to item number one on our agenda, which is the election of President. At the March 28 meeting, our second meeting in March, Commissioner Higgins resigned as President, and the Board moved to nominate a new President. We open nominations, Commissioner R. and I were nominated for President, and then we close nominations. So that is where we are at this point. At this point, I'll ask if there are any, before we get into any Commissioner comment, any further Commissioner comment? And we then tabled the vote until this meeting.
I'd move to reopen the nominations.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, so the nominations are reopened, I was nominated, then Commissioner R. was nominated, so do we have another nomination?
I nominate Don Curley.
Okay, I'll second that. All right, so we have Commissioner Curley as well, are there any further nominations?
And there's no need to renominate Commissioner R. or Commissioner Curley, Commissioner Clark.
Correct. Okay, so is there a motion to close the nominations now?
So moved.
All right, so a second?
Second.
All right, so the nominations are closed, so at this point, if there's any further Commissioner comment, please speak now.
Sure, I'll start it off. So, I did meet with Phil, like Phil and I talked about at the last meeting, you know, it was very productive, obviously. To me, there are two things that we need from the presidency. One is this idea of honesty, which I'm plenty comfortable with Commissioner R., there's no issue on that end from me. The second is, I think we need some experience in the leadership position, and we need the experience to stop us from going through the things like what we went through before. So, in my opinion, either myself or Commissioner Luke Clark would be, have more experience, so I think we would be, either one of us would be the best candidates for the presidency.
Again, I think it's important, the Board of Commissioners, President of the Board of Commissioners, really should be a senior person on the Board, or as much experience as is possible. And Luke Clark now does have two meetings as President, right? But certainly, you wouldn't want to have the most recent member of the Board be the President. I think that the experience, the knowledge of the procedure, the knowledge of the inner workings of the facility, really does lend itself to an upstanding, experienced folks, and we have two here that we have nominated, especially Don and Luke. So, not to say that Luke, not to say that Phil is not respected, he is respected, he's a Commissioner, but he is the newest member of the Board.
Well, I would just comment that I disagree that you need to have an experienced Commissioner as President. It's not rocket science, it's running a meeting. And I've been really impressed with Commissioner R. since he's been, he's been one of the most active Commissioners we've had. As anybody who sits on a Board can attest to, he's been to all of the lower Board Commission meetings, he's really caught up quickly, and been very proactive in gaining expertise in this position, in the position of Commissioner. And I also'd like to just note that, you know, in deciding who you want to be your leader on the Board, I'm sure each one of us does a little bit of self-analysis of, you know, what our priorities are, what our values are, what are the issues about which we are passionate, and we elect a person who, whose values and priorities align with ourselves. So for me, you know, we just had a budget season, we took action on a very important, in my view, investment in our library, in our parks, and in extending our trail system, and that's something that, for me personally, I'm passionate about, so I want the leader that I elect to share that passion, and to share that vision for our township. And that's not to say that the other two elected Commissioners, we just disagreed on those issues, it's fine, I respect their opinions, they're smart guys, they're intelligent, they're able to, would be able to run a meeting just as well as Phil, but for me personally, and for my residents that I represent, I feel that Commissioner R. is more reflective of what we are looking to do to make progress in our township.
Anything else from the Commissioners?
Yes, I'd like to address the question. I've known Phil three or four years now. Phil is a Navy veteran, Phil has a long history in business, he's very experienced in the ways of government and industry. He's deeply steeped in community affairs, he has been active in Garrett Hill for a number of years, and was instrumental in getting an ordinance passed there to create the special district in Garrett Hill. He's a big supporter of trails and open space, and as President, I think that's very important from the standpoint of leadership. And he, we're going to have many issues involving Villanova University over the next five years, and Phil has the history there, he was active in working with Villanova and working in the community, getting Villanova to make concessions, and as a President of the Board, I think he'll be in an ideal position to continue that. So, I think Phil comes out very, very high on experience, and he certainly is honest, he's fair, he's even-handed, he has the right temperament to be the President, and that's why I'm going to support him.
Okay, anything further? All right, we'll open it up to public comment now.
Good evening, Leslie Morgan, Farm Road, Ward 1. I think it's always important to reflect back on the recent history, on why we're here today. And I've been stopped while walking my dog, Peyton Manning, and asked the questions I'm about to ask you or get an answer for. As I recall, Luke Clark was appointed by this Board and voted on unanimously to be Vice President, so people have asked me, well, if they don't want him to be President, but they voted him unanimously, nonpartisan, is this just a Democratic-Republican thing? Because, or did he do something awful? Because if you don't want to support him now, and you just voted for him a few months ago, it certainly seems, if you really want to be honest with your constituents, that this is a partisan-supported thing. And so that might be my personal opinion, but I've been asked that question, because you did vote on him, and you supported him over Phil R., and even though I love Phil. So, and then the second thing, I didn't know Don was going to want to be put into the vote, and I really appreciate that, because guess why, we're here tonight. I believe it was Mr. Curley who found the 995, actually, could the finance, Mr. White, could you tell me what that amount was? The 900, is somebody here who could give us the right amount?
Bob's here, Matt.
Bob, what was the misappropriated budget number? 953,000?
I'm not sure there's a misappropriated budget number.
Okay, the reason why our ex-President had to step down was like almost a million dollars, but it was Mr. Commissioner Curley who found it near a weekend, and deciphered it, and brought it to the public's attention.
I did not, I did not have to, let's correct something, I did not have to step down, there was no misappropriation, there was a matter of an ordinance that was changed between meetings, was going to come up for a full vote, the public and all six, seven Commissioners would have an opportunity to speak on it and vote on it. So it suggests that I did something akin to misappropriation, or secretly, or...
I don't mean misappropriation, Mr. Curley found it out, nobody else told him about it.
Just so you understand, that's the record, that's the record.
For the record, Mr. Commissioner Curley was the one who discovered it and brought it to our attention, so I wanted to say thank you for being so detailed, and I think as a President, we need those detail-oriented people, and so if you look at a recent actual executable, as we say in the real business world, Commissioner Curley brought it to the public's attention, and I'd like to thank him personally, thank you, Don.
Let me even just address some, that it wasn't only me, and others brought it to my attention, so I don't want to, whether it's credit or blame, there were others who were involved with finding, identifying it, and Jim is correct, the characterization of, you know, a misappropriation of funds, in my opinion, is not accurate.
Dan Sherry, Wayne, first of all, no one's blaming you, at least no one reputable for anything, Commissioner Curley, you did this Township a service, as well as other people who found out about that million-dollar spreadsheet line item inclusion by Commissioner Higgins, which in turn caused him to resign as President in disgrace. That's really what I'd like to talk about here tonight, in terms of how these votes appear to be breaking down. Commissioner R., I don't know you very well, but I would like you to assume some hypotheticals, if you wouldn't mind. When somebody resigns in disgrace from a leadership position, I would posit to you, and I'm not a military man, but I would posit to you, that an honorable thing to do would be to step down entirely, because you've lost credibility. Commissioner Higgins can talk about whatever he wants to talk about, and engage, as I described it in two meetings ago when he was here, in the self-flagellation that we all saw, where he's reading aloud the resolution that rebukes him, okay? The honorable thing to do when you do something wrong is step down entirely. No one can force him to do that, he's still here, okay? But now, let's assume another variable. Let's assume that Commissioner Higgins votes tonight on who his replacement as President is going to be. In fact, that's why you're voting here tonight. You push this so that Commissioner Higgins could come back from vacation and participate. Now think about that. It's a guy who steps down and is now voting on his replacement, think about how the public perceives that. Now let's add another variable to that, okay? Let's assume that Commissioner Higgins is not only voting, but he's the tie-breaking vote. 3-3, three people voting for either Commissioner Curley, very honorable man, Commissioner Clark, who again, as I point out at meetings, turned down an unfair advantage for interim status as Commissioner. So now you have Higgins, resigns in disgrace, stays on the Board, votes, and casts the tie-breaking vote for who's going to be Board President. Let's add one more variable to that. Let's presume somebody in this Township, somebody, or people, decide that, you know what, you know what Higgins did without ordinance? Boy, it'd be horrifying if that happened to any other legislation, that type of insert adjective, tampering, improper influence, working behind closed doors. Let's launch an ethics investigation and find out whether or not anything he did regarding this million-dollar database line item was repeated somewhere else. Say there's an ethics investigation. Do you know who Commissioner R. is responsible for representing this Board on the Ethics Board for that investigation? Do you know who that is? The President of the Board of Commissioners. So think about that. Higgins, resigns in disgrace from being Board President, remains on the Board, votes, potentially casts the tie-breaking vote for President, votes you, and then you're the Board's representative for an ethics investigation to make sure, at a minimum, Higgins' behavior, which he defended at the meeting, as being okay to do. It was only later in the meeting that he deteriorated and started mumbling stuff like, "Oh, whoa, it really looks bad what I did." You'll be the person investigating him, the person who you cast the tie-breaking vote for to serve as Board President. Now, this Board has the ability to turn over a new leaf relatively soon, after officers are elected, and I echo what Ms. Morgan said, you put Clark in unanimously, and now all of a sudden, what, he just degraded over the last three and a half months, he's no longer fit to be President, but he's fit to be Vice President? That's nonsensical. But, new leaf, do you really, really want to have your presidency, if you're elected, not only influenced by Commissioner Higgins, but Higgins being the tie-breaking vote? I would recommend to you, sir, that you tell Commissioner Higgins that you don't want his vote. If you're going to win here, you're going to do it on the merits, and convince somebody like Commissioner Booker, Commissioner Curley, or Commissioner Clark to vote for you. Only then, I would submit to you, sir, are we going to be able to move past what happened with Commissioner Higgins' conduct. It was appalling conduct, he acknowledged that it was appalling conduct, there is no reason, sir, that you would want to solicit or otherwise want his endorsement, and the fact that he spent a prolonged period of time tonight beatifying you is something that you should look at with disgust rather than enthusiasm. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sherry. Is there any further public comment?
Good evening, Jim Canelio, 135 Barclayton Road in Garrett Hill, 7th Ward. I know Phil personally, I know Commissioner Curley, I know Commissioner Curley would make an excellent President. an excellent President. I've served on the Garrett Hill Implementation Committee for many years with Phil R. when we redid the zoning in Garrett Hill. It was a three-year process. Phil started as the Vice Chairman, and about halfway through, Rick Barker, who was the Chairman, stepped down and Phil stepped up and became the Chairman. So he was the Chairman at the time that, during the many meetings that the Board of Commissioners considered and finally voted approval of the overlay of Garrett Hill. So in terms of experience, I've seen Phil in action on that Board for three years, and I was impressed with him, and I think he'd do an excellent job of running this Board. With all due respect to Commissioner Curly and you, Commissioner Clark, thank you.
Thank you.
Luke, I just want to correct one thing, Jim. Jim, appreciate the thought. Rick Barker stepped down after we went to the implementation side of it. So for the part of the Steering Committee, Rick was the steer, I was the Vice Chair, but he did step down to that point, and that's the point where I took over. So sorry for the correction, but make it for the record. Thank you.
Good evening. Sarah Pilling, 29 Garrett Avenue for 34 years and a resident of Ward 7. I am a lifelong Democrat. My first election was Jack Kennedy, because in those days, you had to be 21 years old before you could vote. And I worked long and hard for Jack Kennedy in Germantown, Philadelphia, and that part of it turned out very well. The downside for myself was my grandmother, who had raised me, didn't speak to me for three weeks, and my parents were sure that Kennedy had stolen the election from Nixon. That didn't matter. We'd never discussed politics in my family. I found out why, they were all Republicans. I think it is time for this Board to stop being Democratic or Republican. Yes, you have four Democrats, and I want you to know, I'm a shunned member of the Democratic Party of Radnor Township because I speak my piece. They didn't like it very much. I think you need someone who listens, who responds right away, who can cross-party lines. I'm a Democrat, and I'm supporting Luke, and he's a Republican. Luke responds to me if I have a question almost immediately. He listens carefully, he makes suggestions. That is something that I have not received from my Commissioner. I worked long and hard with Dave Cannon and with Fisher. In fact, John Fisher and his wife and Rick Ulo, and I painted the inside of the Comfort Station at McCrone Park because the township wouldn't spend the money, so we did it ourselves. I think you need someone who will listen, who has standards but will listen to someone who is against him or what's going on with respect, and then responds with respect. I think you need to move forward as a body and stop being partisan. So I am supporting Luke, even if he is a Republican.
Thank you.
Joseph Reiser, 500 Heather Circle, Villanova. I would like to actually echo the last two speakers in a way, in the sense that what really bothers me, listening to all of you and having had a little experience being up here, is the political aspects of making decisions for a leader. And I certainly would also echo Sarah's comments from a Republican perspective as well. For me, it's not an issue if they're for Democrats or for Republicans. For me, it's an issue who is the best leader for this body. As far as I'm concerned, probably all of you could be candidates. I could speak about Don Curly very favorably. In my experience with him, he's a straight shooter, keeps me informed. Look, Clark has the best newsletter by far, he communicates effectively. In fact, I sent his Ward 3 newsletter to my Ward 6 contingencies, if you will. So I suspect all of you are very qualified. The issue is, how do you break this political overlay in terms of choosing a leader? And I have a suggestion to you, Commissioner Higgins, in that regard. I take no issue with your history of what you have done. I assume it was done honorably and with your best intentions. However, I think you're in a unique position in this election for the President of this important body, to set a very important precedent to allow the best person to be elected. And you can do that by abstaining your vote. By abstaining your vote, you have a scenario of three and three, from a political point of view, if I count it right, and by, in essence, you defeat the political basis of choosing a person based upon political persuasion. You will therein be forced, maybe it's the second ballot or the third ballot, but you would inherently be forced to choose the best leader. To me, that's a fair way of addressing this dilemma, which otherwise just degrades into political biases this way or that. I don't know Commissioners R., but what I've heard, you probably will make an excellent President, as I said, as others of you probably do. But to try to remove that political oversight would be a major step forward, and I think that's what Sarah just emphasized as well, and what I'm simply doing is offering a potential solution. It would be up to you to make that kind of move, but it would send a strong message, as far as I'm concerned, and I hope others, that you're taking a stand on this political overlay and choose the best person, whoever that may be. And it could be a Democrat as well as a Republican, and I, as a Republican, would welcome either, as far as that's concerned, because I know it would be the best person. Thank you for...
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? All right.
Patty Barker, I live in Garrett Hill. I'm Chair of the Garrett Hill Coalition. I echo what everybody just said as far as bipartisanship. I don't know about the rest of you, but I think we're all sort of sick of partisan politics, not just on a local level, but on a national level. That being said, I do want to address the comments about experience, and they have, people have come up here to talk about Phil. I've known Phil, and I'm going to support him as President, not that I have any say in this matter. I've known Phil since 2008, when the Garrett Hill Coalition was formed. Never knew him in the neighborhood before, he never knew me, but he became part of the Garrett Hill Steering Committee with my husband and five other people, I'm sorry, seven other people, who worked very hard, as Jim said, for three years. We fought long and hard for an open, transparent process. That's something that I think Phil brings to this Commission, and that's not to say that you haven't had it, but many things happen behind closed doors, the executive sessions, that's what's supposed to happen. But I believe that he could bring that experience and knowledge to the presidency of the Board of Commissioners. So while I respect Luke and I respect Don, Don, you know, I've known you many years on your, on the Planning Commission, on the Board of Commissioners, and I appreciate your service, I appreciate all of your service. I do think that stating that Phil has the least experience is untrue, and I think he brings a lot to the table. So thank you all for what you do.
Thank you. No further public comment? All right, then at this point, we'll call the vote. We take the nominations in the order in which they were received. So for the nomination of Lucas Clark as President, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
All right, the nomination fails with Commissioners Nagel, Schaefer, R., and Higgins opposed. Next is Commissioner Philip R. We have to go in the order received. Don, Don's third, so. So for the nomination of Commissioner R. as President, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay.
I'm voting for Phil, and I'm the tiebreaker.
You're not the tiebreaker, the tiebreaker's right here. Yes.
All right, so, all right, so that's, and all those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Nay. All right, so that the nomination carries with Commissioners Booker, Clark, and Curly opposed. Commissioner R... Welcome aboard, Phil. You're our new President.
It is a shame it was upon party lines, as predicted by the astute observations of so many. This is really, this is the smartest group of people in Radnor and our constituents, so very perceptive and really give all the people a lot of credit as well.
All right. So that takes care of that. With that, I'm just going to call a brief recess for two minutes so that Commissioner R. can take his spot, and then we'll move forward.
We're ready to resume? There we are, and we're back on. Thank you. You know, excuse me, if you'll allow me 60 seconds, I'd just like to say two things. First of all, thanks, Luke, for running those two meetings. Actually, that was three things, that was the first one. Secondly, I do want to thank my Commissioners for their service. You know, at the last meeting, or two meetings ago, we came to this point because I told them that I was going to abstain, and I wanted the time to talk to other Commissioners and to get to know them a little bit better, and myself as well. And I took that time and made the opportunities, as promised, to meet with all the Commissioners, either individually or in pairs, or both, in some cases too, to discuss the Board and issues that are in front of the Board as well. So I listened at length to what was important to them. I think there've been good exchanges, and I hope to continue them going forward in the future. I come to believe that even when we have differing opinions, we hold the same interests of all of Radnor in heart, the business owners, citizens, those who come to work here, and support for a great staff who continue day to day to make this place great. Secondly, once upon a time, the great public administration practitioner and scholar, Professor Chester Newland, was asked by a student at his USC graduate seminar class. The question was, Dr. Newland, what are the hallmarks of the American democracy? And Professor Newland answered that the American democracy is marked by these two characteristics. It operates under a system of laws and not men or women, and it's marked for the search for reasonableness and human dignity. For Newland, there could be not an unchanging, there could not be an unchanging state of reasonableness, but there could be, and should be, a constant search for reasonableness. This is the path of the public servant. So I humbly concur with Professor Newland and pledge that as President of this Board of this local township in this American democracy, that while I abide by the laws, our laws, and our rules of conduct that pertain to the operation of these meetings and the activities of the Board, that I will do so in pursuit of reasonable outcomes for our citizens, for the people who attend these meetings, and our elected and appointed officials who routinely give much of their time to be away from their families and their businesses to conduct the important work of this important community. So thank you for taking a moment to listen, and thank you, Don. And now we begin. So we begin with our consent agenda. And these are items that we use, adopted in a group for convenience, and any Commissioner or member of the public can pull any additional item, individual item out to be considered individually. So I'll ask, does any Commissioner want any of these items to be pulled out from the list? Seeing none, I'll ask if any of the public want to pull out one of the items from the list. Seeing none, I'll...
I'm moved that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay. So moved and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Vote is seven to zero.
Second, who's second?
Don did, Don did.
Don, Don moved for second.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, very good. That is cleared up. Terrific. Great. Next item on our agenda is public participation. This is the time we do it now, for the beginning of the meeting, for the convenience of any citizen or participant who can't stay till the end of the meeting when we have our general public participation, and is not able to attend when we have the individual items come up during the course. So we ask that, reserve for that point at this moment now, and if you can, restrict yourself to about five minutes or so, thereabouts, to, so we can continue with the meeting. So has anyone else had a public opinion?
I'm going to call now, because most of the time...
When I come up here, everybody's packing up, ready to go.
Great, can you say your name and your address?
Sorry. Jane Gally Rosemont. Last week, we learned of a $22.6 million donation to the, I had to write this down because I was crazy. Anyway, to renovate Villanova's Pavilion. In a letter to alumni and friends, Father Peter Donahue, President of the Vice of the University, solicited advice and opinion as to how best to go about the renovation. And I quote Father Peter's letter. "The planning phase of the Pavilion renovation will soon begin and continue throughout the remainder of 2016. I know there is tremendous passion for Villanova Athletics and our national championship men's basketball program, so it is important to me that we proceed, that we, that the process be inclusive of one that engages the university community and allows for a wide range of input. Father Peter's community, as he sees it, does not include the neighbors that surround the university. So once again, the township and the 7th Ward in particular will have to brace for an even longer time dealing with the inconvenience and mess at our end of the township. In running for Commissioner in the fall, I talked to a lot of people. The greatest concern with the pending CICD was the traffic, the devaluation of their properties, and the daily disruption of their lives. The CICD and the West Lancaster parking lot are in full swing now. I invite you all, since most of you turn the other way, to come, to come to our end of the township and see firsthand what you thought was a good idea, good enough for the majority of the Board, to change our zoning laws and to ignore over... the board, to change our zoning laws and to ignore, over 50 requests, changes by our township staff, police committees, and the community. We have nearly permanent gridlock from the new Villanova Center to Lowry's Lane. Residents are upset and angry with the additional time needed to get to work, to school, or out of the traffic nightmare on Lancaster Avenue. It is now rippling over to our secondary roads and the neighborhoods. With a new, larger Pavilion under consideration, I would ask three things of the BOC. First, to have Carfax study the cost benefit of Villanova to Radnor Township. I keep hearing, "Well, you know, Villanova is one of the largest employers in the township." Well, what does that amount to in terms of benefit to the township and what does it cost us? Not that they're going to move, but the fact that they, oh, I'll get to that in a minute. Second, that the BOC form a subcommittee to determine the vision of what Villanova, how Villanova fits into the green country mission of our township. Because it seems to me that they are building or planning to build on every square inch of their property as they can manage by bending or getting our laws changed to suit what they want. Case in point, the South Campus and the CICD. Third, to conduct a holistic, comprehensive, independent traffic study of the Lancaster Avenue corridor and all of the affected neighborhoods to include recommendations and to implement as many of the recommendations as is possible to relieve this area. We need to know from the commissioners who represent us, that the commissioners represent us, the taxpaying residents of Radnor Township, and not special interests, and that our laws are applied equitably and equitably. Villanova seems to be one step ahead of the township. One gets the impression that Villanova feels they are an island unto themselves and too bad for the township or anyone else. And we need your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
Good evening, again, Sherry, Wayne. Commissioner R., you made a comment at the start of public participation that this particular point in the meeting for public participation is for people who can't remain for the entire meetings. That's a point of contention for me. By way of brief background, before you got on the board, a certain commissioner, namely the million-dollar line item man, Jim Higgins, among others, was involved in attempting to change how public participation worked during board meetings. It was the subject of a rather lengthy newspaper article. And what happened was, is that Commissioner Higgins, and possibly others, came up with, I believe, an entirely novel resolution that had never been discussed in public. Somehow it got out to the press and then, among other individuals, the League of Women Voters got in here and stopped it dead in its tracks. The public comment section at the start of the meeting is for people who can stay at the meetings, for people that have to leave meetings, or for people who want to come and then come back. There is absolutely no reservations whatsoever in terms of the public's right to speak at the start of the meeting. And to say, as you just did, that this is for people who can't stay is misleading. So please, don't do that. Just Google it. Find out why we're allowed to speak throughout an entire meeting. That's not a good first step. Now, ordinarily, I would give you congratulations in becoming Board President, but seeing as how you got there, again, only with Jim Higgins' vote, I feel that that would be inappropriate. But there is something that you said that did get my attention. And that was that you reached out to every single commissioner over the past, what was it, four weeks, to speak with them, presumably to learn about what they want in a president, their view on public policy, those sort of things. Did you ever think, maybe during that time period, when you spoke to Jim Higgins, since you spoke to everybody, maybe you say to him, "You know, Commissioner Higgins, Jim, if you're on a first-name basis with him, if I'm going to be president, it's very important that I start off beyond reproach, not conversely as the person who is Jim Higgins' choice." If this township was still interested in what Jim Higgins wanted, Jim Higgins would still be president. He resigned again in disgrace. So to the extent you used that time period to speak with people, it is unsettling that you wouldn't have used that time period to talk Higgins out of voting for the new board president. Wouldn't expect you to be persuasive enough to tell him to do the right thing, which is, "Look, Jim, your credibility is more or less shot off the board entirely with you, but at a minimum, at a minimum," it wouldn't have been too much to hope that you would have actually gone to him and said, "Jim, if I'm going to be president, it's going to have to be on its merits, not because you're going to be the one casting the tie-breaking vote." That was very disconcerting to see that. Would also just like to point out that I am pleased, although this wasn't announced, that Commissioner Clark appears to be remaining as Vice President. Just so it's clear for the record, Commissioner Clark is staying as Vice President?
That's correct.
Okay, goodness. It was a little bit of concern to me, if the president steps down in disgrace, do we invariably have to vote on a new Vice President who hasn't done anything wrong? Very happy to see that is not the situation. Commissioner Clark will still be in a officer capacity.
You can sleep now tonight, Dan.
Fair to say. It's just, for those that may not be able to see on cameras, there are not officer placards that denote the names up here as people switched here. So anyhow, it's nice to see that, as Ms. Morgan pointed out, the unanimously confirmed Clark remains Vice President, where, as again, I think it is sad for the township, Commissioner R., that you are President in a four-to-three vote with, despite John Nagel's attempted heroics in claiming that he was the tie-breaking vote. To be fair, this is a competitive class of offensive things John Nagel has said at board meetings, but truly, the only reason why you are Board President is because of Jim Higgins' vote. Last thing I'll say, though you've been generous with the time thus far, is that the gentleman who came up here during the first part of public comment and spoke about how important it would be if there was a three-to-three vote, because then we could have a second vote and then there could be concessions and there could be a meeting of the minds. What a shame it was that that did not occur. People have been up here declaring their political party. I am a Democrat. Again, I don't know you well enough, Commissioner R., to make a substantive determination as to how you will be as an administrator, much less a commissioner. But goodness, that would have been nice to have seen with a three-to-three vote and then Commissioner Curley's traits and Commissioner Clark's traits and your traits could be evaluated in an environment not tainted by the man who thought it prudent and appropriate to put a million-dollar line item into an ordinance that had already been brought forward to the public. So thank you all for your time and your candor. I certainly hope that this meeting improves from this low point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sherry.
Is there any other public comment?
Mr. President, if I may?
Yes.
I guess over the, in about 25 days here, I'll be here six years. Coming here to Radnor, probably a lot of boos go with that too, so you can boo too as well and hiss and that, so. I can say that, you know, coming here to Radnor almost six years ago, they're, you know, a little frightened coming here. You know, you have a very well-educated community, a community that, you know, we can't deny, you know, upscale. You have well-committed community here. People care a lot about their community. You have a lot of boards and commissions that donate their time, you know, here to help the community move forward. You have a staff that I, in all the years of doing this, which in this type of role has been, I'm 27 years of doing this, I've never seen a better staff, more professional staff to work with who care a lot. And as we have, yes, shrunk staff here over this time period, they've picked up that, the extra work and they've not complained. Of course, they've grumbled a little bit, but they've continued to take on those roles and those jobs and they've done it well. As the Board of Commissioners, you know, I have a lot of respect for them. For the $2,100 that they make, they put in an awful lot of time and it's round the clock, 24/7. I know they get a lot of good comments, which are probably a hand, they can count on one hand, they probably get a lot more negatives than they get, complaints, but they follow through on them. The interesting part of this, and I know this is probably not going to come out right, but it's going to be what it is. You know, there are a lot of shots taken at commissioners, there are a lot of shots taken at staff. I think a lot of them, the majority of them, are unfair, unfounded. To be able to grind people, I think, is unfair. You know, I read a lot of emails that it's unfair to take shots at commissioners, it's unfair to take shots at staff. I know we'll get eyes rolled in that, but I tell you, you know, it's easy to, these folks are on 24/7 all the time. It's easy to come up here and walk away and have no responsibility, but these people have lives that they have. To make shots and digs at them, I think, are unfair, unfounded. I have a lot of respect for people who stand up here at the microphone, they put their names to it, they write letters to the editor. I have a lot of respect because you put your name to it and you stand behind that. It's, you know, but we get a lot of people that take, you know, that hide behind blogs and that, to put anonymous things out that they can't stand to. And I think that's unfair. But also too, people put a lot of time into these jobs. All seven of these individuals do that. You know, and I think a lot of it is unfair when people are attacked up here for things that I think a lot of times are fallacy. I think sometimes what's true and what's fact and what's fiction. And I think a lot of times people should think twice about that. You know, when you hear about politics and that, I'm non-political here, I know some think that I am, but, you know, I'm not in the terms of these and ours and I'm not supposed to be. But it's very difficult, I think, especially for staff, when we try to work through a lot of issues here to try to get through where we have to go. I know the commissioners put a lot of time into reading this, but also too, is they answer to their constituents and it's hard for them to make decisions. But also too, there are a lot of issues that come up that they have to deal with. And I know that there are issues that will come up that they have to deal with, but also to understand, there's always two sides to a story here. And sometimes I think some of them, they don't want to be self-gratifying and make comments about themselves. But also to understand that this is Radnor Township, I'm very proud of Radnor Township, this entire staff is very proud of Radnor Township. And I think we need to, and I'm not speaking anybody, so I apologize to the board, I think at times we need to act like Radnor Township. And I think we need to take that class of Radnor Township and realize that as we speak to the board, as the board and staff speak to our residents, we understand that we are Radnor Township and that we are cut above everybody else. And as the sign says, you know, we are the best on the main line. I think at times we should act like we are the best of the main line. And that goes for all of us, that goes for me at times, and I apologize to the board because sometimes I get a little bit, I would say, outspoken at that, because I'm very passionate in what I do. But also too, I think this goes across the board for everyone, that we are Radnor Township because we are watched by other communities and I see how other communities conduct themselves and I think we are above that. And I think we are the best on the main line and I think we should hold ourselves to that higher standard, that we are Radnor Township. Thank you very much for giving me that opportunity.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Now let's continue with our agenda. And first up is the committee reports, personnel and administration, that's covered by me. So our first item is discussion and possible motions on the Pine Tree Road traffic calming. And Bob, I'm going, I know this is an item that you had wanted to talk about, so I'm going to turn it over to you.
Yes, there are a number of issues that have come up in regards to this. I know that the board had wanted me to bring this to them, so I know the board will probably have some discussions on this. But I know there are concerns here. We have stop signs that we are to talk about. I know there are some concerns in regards to our engineers, in regards to this. There's also an issue that has come up regarding the median also as well. Going back to staff traffic, there is a concern regarding that. I think staff traffic has probably discussed this item numerous times. So I think what I'm looking for is direction and guidance from the board on this issue. There are multiple issues here, so I would ask that the board provide us some direction in how you would like us to proceed on this item.
All right, is there some board comment that you want to give feedback to Bob that we need to discuss?
Do you give us an update of where this, I mean, the last time we had it in front of us, we had taken a vote and sent it to have study with a cap of $30,000 of spending. So what has changed since then?
We have, one is we've been directed to remove a stop sign, which is problematic. And then two is there has been an adjustment to an engineer's plan and then directed to bid appropriately, which is problematic. So I think we need to address those.
Okay, those directions from this board? No.
No.
So as I see it, Bob, why don't you just do what the board directed you to do? The board did not direct any action on a stop sign. So as I see it, you take no action until the board directs you to take action on a stop sign. And as I recall at the last meeting, we identified action on the traffic calming measure. So as I see it, you take action on that measure. I'm not, and maybe it's the same as Elaine, I'm not getting a sense of what we can do other than give you the direction that we've already given you.
Well, there seems to be some disagreement as to what the board authorized as far as traffic calming. And I would ask Bob what he believes we told him to do.
If I may, thank you, Mr. Zinkowski and managers. So at the last meeting, I believe Commissioner Booker and the board had directed us to investigate the traffic calming at $30,000. Mrs. Kaminski's original estimate was 60. So there's some, there's a lot of different plans out there because Pine Tree's been looked at several times. So there actually is a plan that has a pared-down version of the medians that I know Mrs. Kaminski prepared. And I'll ask you about the cost on that. What I would request, if possible, is to have Amy Kaminski, the township's appointed traffic engineer from Gilmore and Associates, provide a cost to the township, a cost proposal for taking that pared-down version of the medians, which basically started at Rock Rose and went to King of Prussia Road, to provide us with construction drawings and bidding documents. Because she, I mean, she's that close because she's done the base work to flip them to construction drawings, specifications, we'll provide the front end, and we put that out to bid. We would do the striping, we would have a contractor come in and do the medians. And I would request that we get that. And also, if that's the case, if the board sees fit, then we'll go to bid for that too.
So Steve, you're saying that the board had authorized you folks to look at a plan that would come in under $30,000?
Correct.
And see what you could do? And you say that that plan has now been completed?
I don't know that it's going to be under $30,000, honestly, Commissioner. But I think the only way to find out is if that's what the board wishes, then we go to bid on that. We always did have the other alternate, which was to, you know, install the speed humps. But if that's the way the board wishes to proceed, I would request we get that from Amy. And let's put it on pen bid and see where it comes in, if it's under, then we come back to this board with a possible award.
All right. But it sounds like you have something that's close to 30,000, which is why you're at the point of trying to get a bid now, is that correct?
My cost estimate still came up over 30,000.
Should there be more work done to, on the plan to kind of trim it down some further?
Presently, when we first started talking about Pine Tree, those drawings that I had provided were not based on surveyed plans. And my understanding at that time is that public work would be implementing those, but now it sounds like they're going to be constructed by contractors. So I'm going to need to look at this and determine whether or not we're going to get some survey in that area. So what I can do is take a closer look at this and refine. If you're interested in going with the medians, then we'll look at this and see how much we can reduce the lengths of the medians from the current 50-foot, maybe take it down to 30 feet. I'll have to look into some pubs to see if that's something that's acceptable or not. And that might save a little bit of money. So we can at least, I'd probably rather get a cost proposal to you and then make a decision whether we need to do survey, which I think we probably would need to do that for that area, because we haven't done any survey of that area.
We can really go bare bones and we'll include that in the bid. So we either pay Gilmore or we pay the contractor. Either way.
Well, right now, we don't have authorization to pay for any work. It's just for Amy to go ahead and take a look at it, to propose the designs.
My request to you is that we authorize Gilmore and Associates to provide a cost proposal for construction drawing and bidding documents for medians from Rock Rose to King of Prussia based on the sketch, more or less the sketch plan, which is what we have, a sketch plan that Amy Kaminski has provided. And then we'll be back to this board if you wish to proceed. Part of that will also be a revised cost estimate and I would work with Amy- Part of that will also be a revised cost estimate and I would work with Amy to let her know what we could do, what we would do, and what would be bid out.
Commissioner, comment on where we're at now?
Well, I mean, it basically sounds like where we were the last meeting. And I'm fully, I was supportive of it then, I'm supportive of it now. As far as any other measures that have been brought forward or directed, I think that those should be disregarded unless they come from this board. So.
Well, it sounds like we're in the same spot that we were last time. Bob, do you see anything differently? I mean, it sounds like we need no action at this point, just continue to do what we authorized.
I mean, can we, we can say then that there's unanimous consent to proceed with converting the sketch plan into actionable construction documents? Steve, that's what you're looking for?
Yes, sir.
And then Bob, that's what you're looking for?
Well, I, I think, you know...
Any objection to anyone on the board?
Yeah, I object to spending the money to do that plans, knowing that, two things, ultimately it's probably going to be more than 30, and 30 is even unacceptable to me, given the cost of speed humps, which is essentially nil and would truly slow down people. Whereas within a month of installing these medians, people will be speeding again. We saw this on Wild Haven. Took about a month and we striped over there and moved the sides of the road out. And it took about a month and then people were right back up to their old habits. So to me, it's a waste of taxpayers' money.
I'm going to ask Rich and Jim, if these are, in your words, are close by, affects it, what comment do you have on so far?
You know, again, we, I think that we have had direction. My view is that we did authorize 30,000. That's certainly what I thought I was voting on. But again, I think that we should proceed as we indicated. I think this just confirms that.
Yeah, this is a solution that I think is, is warranted. We have residents adjoining or abutting the proposed median, medians that have been before our board numerous times over the last two years. People that come to mind are Kimberly and William Rolfe. Some want speed humps in that area. I'm not a fan of speed humps. I think this is a solution that deserves consideration. See how it works. The whole idea here is to slow traffic down, to make it safe for the children that live in those houses. So I'm fully in favor of moving ahead with the motion or the ideas that Steve Norsini has talked about.
Well, just to be clear on where we were the last time, I checked back to the minutes because it wasn't quite my recollection. I thought we were just going to design something that might be under the cap of $30,000. And the minutes say, which we just approved tonight, Commissioner Curley made a motion to authorize staff to design an intervention. It says "and," but it's in the typo, it's "in design and intervention not to exceed $30,000 on Pine Tree Road." Seconded by Commissioner R. And there we had the vote. It passed seven to zero. So I was on the impression that we were not voting to spend $30,000. We were voting for the authorized staff to design an intervention that would be under $30,000. Is that correct?
I think that, I think that's accurate. I mean, we never spend it until it comes to us in the form of the contract.
Correct. Right. Yes.
So that's just clarification, Commissioner R. That I, so we will get a cost, if this so pleases this board, we would get a cost proposal from Amy Kaminsky to do just that. And, and part of that proposal would also include a revised estimate.
But I also think, but you know, I think we're, the issue is, is, is you have, again, I just want to go back through this again too, as I understand what Commissioner Higgins is speaking about. Just to again, say that this is not what staff track, traffic, our police department had recommended to go on there, which I support their opinion on that, but the board decided otherwise. The issue comes into direction to staff, which I know they have a concern that they've expressed to me in regards to removing stop signs, which is, which were put in place by law, which they cannot be removed. When concerns are expressed to me by the engineers' licenses being put in jeopardy, by being directed to remove these, I will not direct them to do those types of things because I will not put their licenses in jeopardy. I won't have Steve directed to go ahead and modify a board's decision to put something out to bid that has not been authorized to do that. So that's why we have this discussion and that's why the, I'm looking for the board's direction, which they have directed me to do such. So I know this issue was brought up to the board. And as of yet, I know we have not had this discussion, so that's why I'm looking for the direction from the board.
So I'll make a motion that we authorize staff to prepare construction documents for the Pine Tree traffic calming.
Well, to, to, to design?
Well, I think they've already designed it, design and prepare, Steve. I mean, it's, it sounds like it's a sketch plan with an easy transition to...
Right. I mean, and that's what Amy basically gave us. They, they were not engineered drawings, they, and I'm not speaking for Amy.
No, you're correct. They were sketch plans and it was to give you a sense of what we could do and what the impact might be on the roadway. So, and that's all we've been working off of is those sketch plans.
I mean, preparing the construction documents essentially is including the...
Well, if, if it's going to bid and it's not being done by Public Works, there's going to be, need to be more direction than me providing some cut sheets showing what the dimensions are because then Steve could direct his crew to follow those plans. But when you have a contractor, you need to have more detailed drawings because you don't always get what you anticipate you're going to get unless you give them those detailed drawings.
So my preference would be that it be done by Public Works. I know that puts a burden on you.
It's, and, and my men are very skilled and have that ability. We do not have those forms and honestly, you know, current staffing levels from years ago, a project like that would take considerable time. And when they're doing that, they're not doing all of the other things they, they normally do, potholes, whatever, repairing inlets, most, and obviously do whatever the board and manager wish. The most expedient way, the quickest way, would be to put that out to bid. We would do, my suggestion is we would do striping, other things like that. Let the concrete contractor install the mountable curb. We could even backfill it. Amy and I didn't talk in the beginning and, you know, her, that was her assumption, not a wrong assumption or a right assumption, just an assumption. But usually on a project of this length, we would bid that out.
Okay. Amy, did you have more comment that you wanted to add to? Did not?
No, thank you.
All right. So let me ask, what is, what is the cost to do what you're talking about now? What that would be, Steve? Is there a cost associated with that?
That's, my request to this board was if you wish to proceed in that fashion, in the next week or so, Amy will provide a cost proposal to take that sketch plan to engineer drawings, possibly with survey, and the, the backend documents so we could post on Penn Bid.
Okay. So that's what I think we want to do, or at least that's what I think the majority wants to do, correct? Does anybody feel otherwise? I mean, John does, I know that.
Well, as long, as long as we're staying, we believe they would stay under a $30,000 cap.
Yeah, that's the target. You're targeting a $30,000 intervention.
I'm very confident that Amy's cost proposal will be under $30,000. She laughs. Her, her cost proposal will be under $30,000. If her cost proposal for that work is over 7,500, we would come back to this board. If not, I could, would ask the manager. But then, as part of that work, she's going to come up with the cost estimate. We would come back to you for, to see if you wish to bid it.
Okay. Would need a motion to do that?
Well, I feel like that's kind of the motion that I made. So, a motion that we authorize staff to develop the contract documents for the Pine Tree Road traffic calming intervention. That covers it, correct, Steve? That lets you work out with Amy what you need to do to get us the information to make a decision?
Yes, sir.
All right, second.
Okay. I'm going to vote for this, but I wholeheartedly believe we already approved this and this is what the project already was. So I think this is redundant, superfluous, but certainly my opinion hasn't changed, so I'm going to vote for it.
I object to that, Mr. President, if I may. I don't know, why is superfluous? Where do, where does that come from? Because this is not what's reflected. It is not accurate, those statements.
Okay.
It, it absolutely is accurate. We voted what we were going to do and we authorized up to $30,000 to do it. So I don't think that we need this. And Bob, you don't, it's not, you can't object. This is not a court of law. This is the board.
I have the right, I believe, to participate in meetings. I believe under the administrative code, I do believe you can ask the solicitor for that. I do have the right, I have the right to support staff on this too as well, as well as items that are contained in emails. So I'm not sure if we want to discuss those here. That's, it's the board's discussion, if they want to. I brought this to the board, looking for the board to address these. So it's up to the board whether or not they want to address this. Because this has been brought to you before. It's been sitting there for four weeks and you've not acted on it.
Okay. All right. So I think, so we've got a motion that's been seconded. I think we have a, Commissioner... Have we ended with Commissioner comment? I think it takes another step is where we're going with it. That makes it actionable. And that's, and that's the part where you were at left at. So you were at a point, now you need to take an action step that requires us to do this. Lane?
I support the motion. I think we should move forward. I would like to address our township manager's request. You are right. You received an email giving you direction that was inappropriate. We all understand on this board that we are not as individuals to direct staff. We do not have any power as an individual commissioner, none. You do not have a power as a commissioner of your ward. Your power is as one-seventh of this board. So we will reiterate again for this board, no one on this board has the power to direct staff individually to do any action, removing stop signs, taking action on, taking action on something that was not voted on by this board. So we'll clarify that. Any, any direction that you got that was from one commissioner, that was not commensurate with what we had already voted on, you should disregard. And bringing it to us was the right thing to do.
All right. With that, I'll ask if there's any public comment. Seeing none, we'll call it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None, passes seven to zero. Next item on our list is item B, which is hiring a professional broker to solicit offers for leasing and/or purchasing the Willows Mansion and a small residential lot underneath the mansion. I'm going to ask...
President R., I, I move, I brought this.
Okay.
Based on one of the constituents. As we all are aware, and I will call her up too, as we all are aware, Willows has undergone quite a lot of review recently and there's been multiple attempts at public-private partnerships for redevelopment of the Willows, which have failed. So what we would, what the request of one of the constituents was that we look at actually attempting to lease the facility as a private residence. Also, we did have an instance where we had, the staff had published a confidential bid and we want to make sure that if there's confidential bids, that we not publish those on, on our website. So number one is consideration of a professional broker to solicit offers for leasing the Willows and a small ground lease below for public, for private residence. And then letter C, which goes with it, is to determine an actual business forecast on the public use component. So one of the things that we talked about is there would have to be a public use of the Willows if it was rented to others. And we want to get a better understanding of the public use and how that would actually work, either in the case of a nursery school or preschool or public use as a, if it was leased out as a private residence or any other measure. So that's, that's what I have. That's, and I'll call Ms. Leslie Morgan, who is a real estate professional in Radnor and who raised this issue with me.
Thank you, Leslie. Word one. Well, I think it was a little, I'd like to add a little color to the first part. I think we've been at these meetings for a very long time and I, I think a lot of your constituents, the majority, would like to see this issue have a great solution. And that's a great solution for the board, but mostly for the taxpayers, your residents, the people that vote for you. I was down there yesterday. I didn't run into anybody from Radnor Township except Sarah and the people working at the cooperative farm next door. Everybody in the park didn't live in Radnor and we were there for an hour and a half. But it was nice to see the park being used on that beautiful day. So I guess my thought was you, at the drop of a hat, you spend $55,000 to get a small part of the trail designed by Natural Lands Trust, just in the consent agreement so that the public knows, because consent agreements get jammed in. I, I want to confirm that item N was the approval of the proposal for Campbell, Thomas and Company for services rendered for the implementation of the extension of the Radnor Trail. That again, was for engineering design services, I believe, and it was for $265,000. What I'm proposing is what most normal people would do. They would hire a professional real estate broker. You want to lease it. The daycare came through one of your subcommittees as a friend of a friend. So the daycare wants a place to go because they were evicted. They were evicted from their current location. And that's all well and good, but why not get a professional? Whether it's a private house or another daycare, maybe it's a public daycare company, great credit, maybe pay more. Maybe it's a foundation, maybe it is a law firm that has very few employees but makes a lot of money. And maybe if you're going to lease it, hire a professional, commercial and large private residence specialist. There are these people out there and you would be surprised what people are paying. So I just said, if you're going to hire all these other para-professionals for all these other things, if it's so important, the Willows, as I've heard you all speak that it is, and it is for your constituents that you represent, hire a professional. None of you are professionals in this matter. Maybe, just maybe, even though you may not like my tone, maybe we would all be surprised who would come forth. And it would be somebody we've never thought of before. We hire money, better use, they would actually do things in their million or $2 million budget that mattered to the visage, like replace windows and roofs and things like that, that you're never going to get from the daycare. Maybe it would benefit everybody and I think it's worth it. I think you've not done this. We've tinkered around for four some years and to just have a friend of a friend from one of your subcommittees because somebody was evicted, I don't think that's fair.
They were not evicted. They were not evicted. Their lease expired and it was not renewed.
It wasn't renewed because of a certain situation which I can...
To say that the nursery school was evicted is defaming the nursery school.
Okay. They were asked not back because of some of their beliefs. How about that? Because I have a letter, Jim.
We don't agree on that.
But I don't want to go there. I don't want to go there. I want to go that we should have a competitive process that is clear and maybe handled by a third party. And then everybody talks about the public use. Nobody's going to use it as daycare on the weekends, going to have sweet 16s or weddings there. They would use it as a caterer. I'm very supportive of that. So why don't we have a consultant come and tell us how much public use or private use we can get out of it? I think it's worth it, you guys. You spend money at the drop of a hat on other things. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan.
All right. So, so I think we need a motion to, to consider it further or do you want to discuss it otherwise?
Oh, if you want to make a motion, I mean, I think we should discuss it. This is a very nebulous idea, so let's discuss it a little bit and get some, some parameters around it.
All right. I would move the Board of Commissioners of Radnor Township, hire a professional broker to solicit offers for leasing and/or purchasing the Willows Mansion and a small residential lot underneath or other possible uses. And B, so that would be hiring for that, for first purposes would be A, and then B would be in conjunction with that, performing a business, a forecast on the public use that would be possible with any potential leasing or sale of the site, or leasing of the site.
Okay, let's have, is there a second for that?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we have some board discussions on this.
Um, so I, I would not support that motion. I, first of all, I do not believe that we would sell this land. When we did our last RFE, RFP in 2013... we would sell this land. When we did our last RFP in 2013, the number-one criteria on our list of when we refined our, our RFP was, the township does not want to relinquish ownership of any portion of the Willows property, period. That was our number-one criteria. So, this, unless the composition of this board has changed so drastically, that was a non-starter. So I think that, for that reason alone, it fails. We also were very specific that we did not want it to be a completely private use, and that we wanted it to be, have a public use for the residents, and also community use, township use by community groups, and by the township, its Parks and Recreation Department. So that would preclude a private use, of, you know, someone buying it as their private residence. Or it would be a very strange private residence. So, so that, I think, takes it out of the realm of a normal leasing situation.
Oh, that would take it out of the realm of a purchase situation?
Now, I attended, along with several other of the commissioners, we attended a community group meeting, and one of the ideas that came up during that, that meeting, which was very interesting and productive, was the notion of going back for an RFP. And I will be honest, when the caterers fell through this last time, in the last round of trying to make something work there, you know, that was some of our internal discussions. Well, you know, should we go back out for another RFP? It's been a few years. We've sort of refined what we might want to see there. We do have this offer that's come to us, but we could go out for another RFP. And at this point, it would be a much quicker and more streamlined process, because we've been around this block a few times. And we toyed with that idea. We, it did not get legs, and this other offer came in. But when it came up again during that meeting, we had, I thought, some productive discussion about it, of how we could make another RFP work better for us. And that discussion went along the lines of, when we did our first RFP and the subsequent refinement of that RFP, we had a big ask. You know, we, we, basically, the four big things we wanted a tenant to cover were all of operations, all of maintenance, all of renovations, all of capital investment, and make a fee, or pay a fee, or enter into some sort of profit sharing. That's a pretty big ask. So, and if you have a big ask like that, you're going to get an intensive use. And, which is what we got. You know, we, we got the offer for a pretty intensive wedding catering business to set up shop there. But we all felt that it was worth the trade-off to save the building. I think we've heard from many residents that they feel that the school is also a very intensive use, but it checks off all those boxes of, you know, the costs and the fees and the, and the making revenue. So, so my, I'm bringing this up now because I would like for part of this discussion to be whether a board members would like to revisit sending out another RFP on a expedited schedule, since we already have a very good idea of what we want, but with a smaller ask. You know, not looking to make the revenue that we were looking to make before, maybe doing cost-sharing of the capital expenses and some of the maintenance. And I look to an example where this works for us, and that is the Kruzberg Center, where they are, we have a tenant situation, a private user, the use is a little less intense, but they're not, they're paying us $1 a year, and they're not responsible for all the capital expenses. We pay for many of the capital expenses. They are responsible for putting a designated amount every year into the building for maintenance. I think it's at $20,000 or something like that. So they do have to, you know, participate in keeping that building alive and well. But the ask from them is nothing near the ask we put in our original RFP. So, I, I want to put out there, there is something I would, I personally would support going out for another RFP. I'd like to hear other colleagues' response to that, and perhaps the public's response to that. Obviously, not something we have to decide tonight, but I, I believe that if we did that, we may get, we may get a refinement of the school's offer. We may get other offers that compete with the school's offer, and we might get a community group that, you know, if there's a groundswell of activity, that can put together a nonprofit use. So, that's my two cents.
Thank you, Lane.
Well, just, just before you go, the clar, the question, the issue, the motion was solicit offers for leasing, okay? Leasing the Willows Mansion. So, any lease could be for a private residence with a public component, right? Could definitely do that. And even purchasing, as you note, it would be unusual, but it could be purchased and also have a public component. So, that's the issue we're before. So, I, I don't think that that precludes anything. I don't disagree with the concepts that Elaine talked about, but the, the motion is, does not preclude any particular use. It's a study of those particular uses, and my view of it would be that we would be ones that would be less expensive to the township, which would be something that I would favor more. Sure. So first, this is, while this may be new to people, this may be the first time you heard it. It's something that we've dealt with for years. So, please don't think that we're jumping right to the chase. Like, if we, if we state a conclusion, it's because we've had three or four years of this. It isn't new to us.
Five or six.
Yeah, maybe it's five or six, is what John's telling me. And then, for me, there's been some transition, in my opinion, on this, because I was part of the initial, I voted for the initial RFPs, in part because I did not know how intensive the uses would be. When I saw what we had to get, and what we had to give up in order to get what we got, to me, my, my takeaway was that, that those commercial uses are too intensive, and I don't want to support anything that will weaken the park. The park is the benefit, and that's what I think we need to protect. So, if, if we're going to lease the building, if we look at the building as a commercial entity, then, then we should have a professional guide us in that decision. I think it's a mistake for us to look at the building as a commercial entity. I, I want, I want the building to be part of the park, and, and so my, my resistance to having a, a professional guide us in making it the best commercial use is not because I don't believe in professionals, it's because I don't want the commercial use. I have very little willingness to, to transfer, sell, or rent the property. I want the property to be used in its park-like capacity. I, I need to see public access to it, and I need to see the park uses retained. What am I willing to do? Well, I'm, I'm willing to enter into some kind of agreement that preserves the, the park-like use. The two that I'm hearing as most reasonable, these are the ones that I think are most likely the overlapping circle that satisfies the largest number of people. One is this idea of some kind of community group taking the responsibility for the building. There's probably a tremendous amount of fundraising involved in that, but then they can generate the money. We can enter into some kind of partnership with them, and they can use their connections and their capability to funds to try to restore the building. Just exactly what restoration means remains to be seen. And then the second item is this idea of the, you know, what I'll call a, a postmodern reconstruction, which is that you're, you're taking the building itself, and you're trying to reconstruct it in a manner that makes it part of the park, as opposed to separate from the community. So, and that's, Rick Leonardo presented a drawing. That's the, the idea there. I'm calling it a postmodern reconstruction. So, at this point, and then RFP. So, yes, one of the takeaways for me at the meeting that Sarah hosted was that the, I had already concluded that our ask was significant. So if you have a significant ask, you're going to get only intensive uses. The part that was sort of a takeaway for me was that there were people there who indicated that if there was not such an intensive ask, community groups would have come back with less intensive alternatives. So, I am open to another RFP that, specifically, that's going to involve community groups in ways to make the building a better part of the park. I'm not open to another round of commercial RFPs for bringing more commercial activity into the park through the building. So, I guess there's some similarities with Elaine's position. There's some differences with it, but that's my position. I'm open to an RFP to consider the non-commercial activities, but not open to another round of RFPs for commercial activity.
Thank you, Don. Anything else? Donna?
Well, just quickly, I am open for selling, I would certainly consider selling the mansion and a parcel that would go with it for private residence. I, I don't see how that would affect the park.
I just wanted to say, I think that was well said, Don, and, and I certainly favor anything that's resident-led. You know, I think Sarah had the right idea with, with her meeting. So I'm, I'm very interested to see what comes out of that, and if this works with that, then I'm fully supportive of it.
Good. Do you have anything?
Well, I definitely don't want to let this building go out for sale or lease to, for private use as a residence. I'm, I'm very surprised to see that this is even on the agenda, since we have had discussions with the St. David's Nursery School for better part of the last 10 months. Bob, are those still, where, where do we stand with the nursery school?
They have come and met with us on several occasions. They still have not met the requirements that we have asked for back a while ago. So, we still anticipate them coming to us to meet the requirements that we had set forth back a while ago. So, we anticipate meeting with them here, my guess is probably within the week, to see if they have complied.
Those requirements were hard plans--
Correct.
--as to what they want to do.
Correct.
Okay. Since, since we don't seem to be having the necessary responsiveness from them, then I'm okay with Elaine's idea of exploring other uses. I, I think we're a little bit naive if we think we're going to get community groups to come forward and put up the amount of money that we need to rehabilitate the mansion, but I suppose it's worth a try.
Donna, do you have something?
Well, only that I really support the idea of the RFP. One of the things that actually will help us with our dealings in the nursery school is that it'll codify exactly what staff's been asking for. It'll formalize it. In addition, if we are fortunate to have some other interest, we then could be comparing apples to apples. So, there's a lot of benefit there. I will never support selling off the building and the land or tearing it down. I believe it is such a critical property for Radnor Township, and it is the symbol of Radnor Township.
Well, but that symbol has been boarded up and not used for years. So I don't, I don't see how that is a symbol that we really want to have.
Rich, you had your opportunity to talk. Thank you.
I, this is making a comment on what you just said, that's all. So don't get offensive.
Anyway, everyone I talk to that knows Radnor, the first thing they talk about is driving by the Willows, and the view scape there. Personally, I think one of the things we should be considering is returning to the way we operated previously, with township staff operating it, and go back to the way it was in the old days. That, of course, would take a lot of money, and so the idea probably won't get any legs, but I think it's only fair to evaluate that as a purely public use. And Sarah, you've been standing patiently. Why don't you come up?
Before Sarah, before we take public comment, I want to put another competing motion on the floor. I believe we can have two motions on the floor at once, just so that the public could react to that as well. And that, I'm going to go ahead and move that we direct staff to, either Solicitor or, or Steve together, to draft an RFP for the Willows Mansion. And the beginning point would be the refined RFP that we had in the last process, but reducing, with everything that was in that, but reducing the ask to be more in line with what we achieve through our lease with the Kruzberg Center. And then, so, and that's the end of the motion, but logistically, that, that draft RFP would come back to this board, and I would suggest to the Parks and Recreation Board to kind of tweak it and see if there's anything else we want to put in it or take out. I guess this should go to the Parks and Recreation Board first. And then, then we'll have a discussion at this level about whether that RFP reflects what we'd like to see from potential participants.
Point of order. I think that's a rather convoluted motion, but irrespective, I don't think it's, I don't think it's proper. We have, we have a motion on the floor, consider it, public comment. If it fails, then we can take another motion. I, I don't think it's proper to consider those two non-compatible motions at the same time.
My mistake. I thought you could have two motions on the floor at once. I didn't think there was any rule against that.
Well--
Why don't we let Sarah talk?
I think we have two ideas on there. One may be a motion formally, and let's have some public comment on these.
Sarah Pilling, 29 Garrett Avenue. Two weeks, only two weeks ago, I issued a challenge called Action by the Residents. And we did have a meeting on Wednesday, the 13th of April, and I'd like to report back to you some ideas that were floated. There were four commissioners there. The fifth had to stay home and babysit. So these were, we did a moment at time of reflection to come up with a word, and such word is celebrations, families, money pit, gatherings, history, memories, multipurpose vista, community setting, fireworks, nothing, beauty, artistry, and concert. And then, after thinking about those, we came up with some ideas. There were two bookends to the ideas. One was the necessity to do due diligence after you floated your idea, so it was not just a butterfly, but it got some legs. And also to identify potential sources of funding to accomplish and maintain the building, so it wasn't just a free form. These were the ideas that came forward. I'm just going to list them. Tear it down. An open-air pavilion. A school. A private home conversion with restrictions. A partial tear-down, preserving the evocation of the building to become as public space for multiple uses. A cultural center, which did involve building another building, encompassing the entire park, including the cottage. Then it sort of diverted over on the cottage to make the cottage restrooms, snack bar, bike rentals, et cetera, to accommodate and support the new trails. A new senior center, a bed and breakfast, to redo the RFP. A private social club with a $2,000 subscription. And to actively support the restoration and maintains, maintenance of the building by the tax base. So we talked about the next actions. I did send all these, the summary to all the commissioners. A possible new RFP utilizing some or all of the visions put forward in this meeting, to learn what the BOC needs. A further discussion of the philosophy for the future, not only of this building and our parks. Are our parks to become income sources? Are they for donations or taxes? Is it to be public use only? Or is it to be a private-public partnership of our public spaces? Is that what we want? What would we lose in the process of privatizing? So we talked about a next meeting, and we were encouraged, because the way to get this word out was a little difficult, was to have a meeting here. And the committee asked the commissioners to waive the fee for us to have a meeting here, which would be televised, and I assume everybody has cable and would watch it. Not so sure about that. So we thought about it. You can waive the room use, but in order to have it televised, you'd have to have, you have to pay Jim $100. So if we have another meeting, and we'd like to come back, because two of the ideas have gotten legs, we'll ask each person to come to bring $5, and we'll put it in the pot, and that'll pay for the TV. So that's about where we are. And we asked them, I know that the, the cultural senior center seems to have gotten some legs, and the project of taking down parts of the building but using the open space, thinking that the view shed is really the most beautiful thing, and turning it into more of a public space. And I suspect it wouldn't cost the township much of anything. it into more of a public space, and I suspect it wouldn't cost the township much of anything, and that a committee would be formed, they would raise the funds for the tear-down and the creation of the space, and it would involve forming a Friends of the Willows, so that the exterior, any gardens, any plantings, would be taken care of by volunteers. So, there are two that have acquired legs since the 13th of April, and I would encourage you to allow us to continue to work this process. In the end, it may amount to nothing. The group who wants to do something may not be able to raise the money, and that's the end, because the township doesn't want it to cost them any money. But I would encourage you to give the residents a chance. What they really want is what you said, Elaine. They want a public park that they can use. I am there almost every day for the garden, and there are days when I can barely get in the park, because it is so full of people. Picnicking, walking, pushing carriages, walking the road for exercise, fishing, painting, photography. It's just amazing to watch what goes on in that park if you're there day after day after day, and I mean Monday through Sunday, and people who stop at our garden and ask us what it is, and want to talk about it, and come in and look at it. So, I ask you to slow down and allow the residents, this committee, which was about 22 people to start with, and if we have a meeting here and it's allowed to be televised, I think it will begin to gain some momentum. I know that Rick Leonardo and I are doing a television show this Thursday, so there will be another way for it to be shown to the township. But if you do it at an RFP and you want a great deal of money, you are not going to get resident involvement, and I think the residents really have a right to at least have some input as to what's going to happen to the building. By the by, I met with an historical architect today. We went in the mansion. He's a great devotee of Charles Barton Keane, and he is what's called a classical architect, so this kind of a building really responded to him. There's not a piece of anything inside that house that reflects Charles Barton Keane. It's all from the late '30s and '40s, when the Zanzingers redid it. And then we looked at the floor plans, and then we looked at the outside. It's not the same design. It was severely altered by the Zanzinger, including raising the roof. It is not the original design, and that began to change things for me. And we stood in the billiard room, and the floor was bouncing, and I don't weigh that much, and this guy weighs less than I do, and the floor was vibrating. We were the only two people in the building. So, he reluctantly said he doesn't like tearing down old buildings, but he really didn't see a reason to keep it, because what is here is the memory, not the building. So, thank you for letting me to report, and if you guys will allow us to use this building at no cost, but we will pay for Jim, we will have another meeting, and we will televise it. Hopefully, we'll expand by people who are listening tonight. All wide opinions, it was a very cordial meeting. Somebody told me that afterwards. I was not a proposer, I was a convenor. And we'd like to have another meeting and see if we can get some legs. We don't want you, we feel cheated if you put out an RFP in two weeks, because it doesn't give us time to gain momentum, to do our research, to look at sources of funding, and that's what we're doing now. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
I'll also add that that meeting was well-attended and had some good ideas. It was surprising, some of the ideas have bubbled up, but what was most great about it was how people talked about the Willows, and we got some consensus about what it meant to folks, and I think whatever we end up doing, if we can approach the kind of passions that were talked about in terms of memories or community, that we'll be well-served.
Joseph Reiser, Villanova. I'd like to address the RFP issue, because I think that's a key issue in this discussion. I'm all for Sarah's initiative and fully support her, and I know many of my friends who do as well, and I think it's a great initiative, and it should be given time and room to produce a proposal. On the other hand, I also recognize the challenge that you as commissioners have in responding to the community as a whole in terms of listening to all options. And as much as I would vote today for Sarah's, and I will continue to support that even financially if necessary, I sense that you have the challenge of addressing all options in a meaningful way, and therefore, I suspect the RFP may in fact be a necessary vehicle or step to do that. And I don't think it is in conflict what I think I heard Sarah from doing, in a sense, and she should continue to do her initiative and with the help of everyone participating. But I think it's probably still important to have a broader perspective for the community to weigh in, so that you are not, in retrospect, going into the same direction that you have been going, which is, the last time I spoke here, we only spoke of one option, which was the school option, and the sense was, it's only the school options that we're talking about, and, you know, for us, it was somewhat of a revelation. So, I suspect the RFP may be necessary. However, in order to make the RFP effective, in my view, it is very critical that we define the premise of the RFP. If you define the premise, again, as leasing here, buying there, variation X, Y, and Z, I suspect you're going to be ending up exactly where you've been, and that is with too many options that are too controversial and probably won't, in the end, be acceptable. In my view, I think Don Curley mentioned, I think, the approach that I would certainly favor, and that is to define the RFP clearly as, the premise of the RFP as being a premise that whatever the outcome of the RFP should be, should have the guiding principle that the Willows, it will continue to be used as a public space by residents of Radnor. That would necessarily exclude buying or selling, and that could exclude even leasing to any private organization. I don't know if you can find consensus on that point, but if you can, then you will have an RFP that you send out with the premise that whatever options should come to you should be on the basis that Willows continues to be a private, a public park for public use, and that includes, of course, the Willows. With that, I think you can get some very good options, I suspect, and one of them may be Sarah's option, and it could be others as well, that would then define on this end of the spectrum to either tear down the Willows Mansion, or on this end of the spectrum, fully rebuild it, if you will, to its use. And within that spectrum, there could be an easy middle ground, and I think Sarah has already suggested that direction. The other thing that's necessary is that you, that we get a knowledgeable input as to what an option presents. If we're talking about tearing down the option of the mansion, we should know what it costs by someone who knows about tearing down buildings, if you will. If it's restoring the mansion, then it should be someone who knows how to restore mansions and what that costs. And then, there will be perhaps a middle ground that is more acceptable financially, and then I think we're back to Don Curley's point. We have the money if we just allocate it accordingly, if it's via taxpayers' monies, but it also can be now a taxpayer-public partnership, if that is perhaps a variation of the theme. But everything will be defined by those boundary conditions, and then I think we can find a solution, and then you orient everyone toward the best solution within that process. If we open it up very broadly again, I suspect it's not going to be very productive, and that's my concern about defining the RFP, and I just wanted to emphasize that point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I may?
Yes.
Just a few comments. One is, before we go to the RFP, what I'd like to do is go with Commissioner Booker's recommendation to use a professional real estate firm to actually go out and see who we're looking at, who would be interested in doing something at the Willows Mansion. We could go out with an RFP out to everybody to look at this and not come back with really anybody who has real interest in this. I think we could use Avison Young, who is a professional firm, who is currently working with Carfac. We can engage them. We have a good working relationship with them now. They're working with Carfac. I would suggest that we use them during this process, during this interim time while Sarah and her group, if the board is agreeable, while they're working on this. So, that would be a recommendation, I think, using the professional company to look at that and to see who would be interested in that particular site, source for us what types of use that would incorporate the public use or any type of things. Come back with a report for us during that time in which Sarah and her group is working on that, then this way you'd have two things working at the same time. Then with an RFP, which we'd be putting out blind again, not knowing who we'd be looking for. But also, this gives the time for not only Bob Tate and the Finance Department to look at this, because we have no budget for this, we have no money, we don't know what we would be committing in an RFP, and what comfort level the board has, you know, what kind of money would we be committing to on this if we are going to support a venture, because you have a building that is in desperate need of repair, is what does that commitment look like, you know, how much money does the township want to put up as part of this matching? Are we going to share this or not? Because the original intent almost five years ago was that we were going to offload this, that this was going to be a separation here. I think as part of this process and the public meetings that we've had, I know Amy, we're looking at, working with Steve, with the folks from Inverary, with their traffic issue and concern that's there, bringing, having someone cross there, because it's our understanding that they use the park quite a bit, walking across but trying to cross, and then walk not with traffic to get into the park, looking at a crossing point there to get into the park, access to bring themselves down into the park, so this is another option. So, again, that's engaging the residents and that community with Commissioner Curley. I know he's had his hand on the pulse of those residents in that area, and has represented his constituents well in that area, too. So, there's multiple things that can be working at the same time that I think would achieve what the board's looking for in that particular area, so.
Bob, can I ask you, have you had conversations with a commercial broker about the realistic, how realistic it is to find that they would be, I mean, with the parameters that we have just set, or several of us have just set forth?
I think what we've looked at, and I think one of the big misnumbers is, we've actually had a professional real estate broker working with us for the last five years that has been part of this, that has been giving us guidance throughout this entire process, that has volunteered their time through this, that has taken us through this area, and even has worked with us and with Carfac to come up with the analysis, even with the Conroy proposal, to actually come up with that, and even the financial aspect of it, too, which they were involved with. So, we've had, I've had some just general conversations, I think, when this had come, appeared on the agenda, if this would be something they'd be interested in citing for us and making a type of recommendation. So, I think this would be something they would be interested in doing and coming back to the board with some recommendations, but I think what-
And what kind of cost is that?
Again, this would be something that I would get a proposal. I would keep it well within the range of less than $7,500 for them to be able to look at this, to be able to come back with recommendations. But I think from the point that Rich was making, I think this, I think it would be money well-spent for us to look at it and analyze from a professional perspective to say, here's what, here's what your facility is looking like.
But, so, without an RFP, this is my concern, that we'd waste a lot of people's time, because without an RFP, we are wasting a lot of people's time, because we have these, we do not want to sell it, we do not want purely private use, we do not want to lease it to someone who's not going to, we want it to have a primarily public use. And, you know, without setting forth what those parameters are, without an RFP, I don't, I just feel like we're going to get a lot, especially with a commercial broker, we're going to get a lot of unacceptable offers.
Right, and I think from even just that conversation, I'm not sure if you have anybody that's going to come with a commercial use or a public use that's going to take on any of the renovations, because for any kind of public or commercial use, that, it was, it's a residential house that was never converted to a commercial or public use, so there's going to have to be major renovations. And I guess from my opinion, and I think that of staff, I just don't see how we invest any type of money into that facility without major renovations. And when we looked at major renovations, we had a plan with Conroy that it was going to be their expense, their dime, to make that full expenditure, and it couldn't be done based on their intensive use. And I think what Don goes back to, it was an intensive use that they were going to use to be able to make that investment, recoup their investment, and then pay a revenue back. But, again, I think we're in a situation where I'm not sure if, at the end of the day, we're going to meet these requirements to get someone to come in, make it a public use, that's going to make it worthwhile for someone to invest that money into that facility and still provide a public space and public use. Because as part of that public use aspect, you're going to have staff that's going to be involved somehow managing that, and there's, that's an expense to the township.
Mr. President, can we move ahead on the motions? I think we've had plenty of discussion.
That's fine. Yes, we can. So, right now, we have one motion up, and Rich, would you like to restate it just quickly, since it's been a few minutes?
The motion was, A, hiring, it was hiring a professional broker to, A, solicit offers for leasing or purchasing the Willows, and consideration of a small residential lot underneath, so professional broker solicit offers, purchasing or other commercial use, and then, or private use, and then, B, letter B, preparing a business, preparing, I'm going to change this to a forecast of the public use component with each such, each such use to be considered.
Thank you. I'd like to offer an amendment to that, and we can vote on that part, whether that suffices or not, just because I don't want yours to fail for being too extreme, and that is, is that I wonder if there's appetite to take off the purchasing component for that. I've heard spoken tonight that we were not in a position, or would not want to be in a position of actually selling it, but we would look at a lease situation. So, I'd like to amend, make a motion to amend it to take the purchasing aspect out of it.
I second. All right, for discussion purposes-
I think the spirit of, I don't think those of us that, we wanted possession of the building. I don't think the form of the possession, we didn't want to give away possession of the building or the site. I don't think it matters to us much whether we lease it or sell it, so I'd be surprised if that's the critical element.
Well, was it the Conroy situation? Was that a lease?
Yep.
So, that had legs before, didn't it? All right.
You know, you've motioned, you've made a motion to delete purchase?
Yes.
No.
You're not, okay.
I'm not second.
Okay. Anybody else want to second or not?
I'm second.
Okay, John seconded, okay. All right. What's, any comment on that?
For discussion purposes, could we hear the other motion, so we know what we're comparing here?
We're comparing it to all solutions.
Do you have a-
You can't have two motions on, at the same time.
No, I'm not asking for that. I'd like to hear what the other motion is before we discuss it. Do you have one, Elaine?
I will be putting forth a motion. Is it, John Rice, is it right, you can't have two motions on the floor at once?
You have a motion, and then you have an amendment to it.
So, you don't, can't have competing motions?
No, you gotta-
No.
You gotta move them, I mean, the first one is to vote on the amendment.
Okay. I will not be voting for this motion. I don't think, I'm not comfortable with the commercial broker and taking it in that direction. It's not the direction I want to go into. My motion will be more along the lines of an RFP process that we would control, and there is not, we wouldn't have to do it in the next two weeks. We could take our time, put it through our boards. But my, my motion is for an RFP that is a process that we control and use our Carfac expertise for free and our Parks Board to help us navigate.
Okay, thank you.
All right, good. Any public comment on that amendment for the moment?
I'm agreeing.
All those in favor of the amendment?
To delete, to-
Delete purchasing, right. Say aye?
Aye.
Okay. All those no?
opposed.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay, okay, fails, five to two. Very good.
So, it goes back to the original motion, which is hiring a professional broker to solicit offers for leasing or purchasing of the Willows Mansion for a small residential or commercial, and then, letter B, forecast on public use in connection with each such use.
Bob, can I ask you, or John Rice, can I ask you a question? Can we have two, can we have two items out there? In other words, can we go with looking for a professional broker and also consider an RFP?
Well, that's not his-
No, it's not his.
No, I mean, the RFP is going to be a separate motion.
Yes, but can you have both of those live?
No.
Not to be considered, but can we have-
No, what he's saying is, can we have an-
No, what he's saying is, can we have an RFP out there while also having a broker handle this, assuming both are passed?
Assuming both motions pass, yes.
That's all I need to know. All those in favor of Richard's motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Nay, all right. Fails, four to three. All right. Elaine, do you would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to move that we direct staff to begin the RFP process with drafting an RFP, beginning from the refined, the last refined RFP, but scaling back the ask to be more in line with the Kruzberg situation.
Second to that.
I'll second it.
All right. Board discussion? Yeah, and I'd like to add a component to it. I don't think you would object to it. I think we need to have a second component of this that would be something more like a request for concept or a request for visions because there should be a component of this where people come to us not with saying, we will, we will raise the cash to do this, but here's the vision that we have for, and it's well within the, you know, it's within the confines of what the township should, should fund. So I just want to augment what you provided to include something that like a community group would come to us, similar to, you know, how the Finley House is run by a nonprofit, correct? I'm assuming, I don't know their finances, but the garden doesn't, you know, we fund the garden. So ideas that still involve the township funding, but don't have any, there, it isn't like they have to, there has to be a commercial component to it, or they have to provide us cash, or they have to renovate the building. It was just vision ideas for the building. So your, your thought on that?
So are you amending Elaine's?
Well, if nobody thinks it's a good idea, then.
Well, I mean, I think that if, if that notion isn't reflected in the first draft, we can act it, we can, we can put it in, but.
But why not put it in now then?
I mean, shouldn't we have a resolution on this for the next meeting that we're going to vote on? I mean, isn't that where this should go?
Well, the draft, when the, a draft came to us, it would be a resolution.
Yeah.
It'd be something concrete to vote on.
So all we're saying, all we're saying is we want a resolution on the next agenda, right?
Well, we want an RFP.
An RFP, which could include Don's.
And I, and I want it to have, I want it to be a request for, like, so one, some of the ideas that came up at that meeting would not fit into the idea of proposals. They would fit into the ideas of people had a vision for the property that doesn't involve them, them raising money or spending other people's money. It involves a vision for the township.
Well, I, I mean, I, I want to encourage that, but I also, we need a realistic solution.
Oh, my goodness. That's not a realistic solution to have a township invest in its park?
No, no.
How can that not be a realistic solution?
I'm saying, I would like to force people who are interested in responding to have something concrete to.
Right. And this is part of, part of the problem is part of what I heard at the last meeting was that part of why people didn't respond with different visions is because we defined by, the RFP sort of kept them out of responding. So we need, we need to provide the opportunity for people who have a vision for using the site that has no commercial component to it, no, just, it's a park and this is how it should be used as a park.
Okay, but it still has to have a financial component. It still has to have a, something, how it's going to be paid for, even if it's public money. It still has to have, a vision alone is not going, is not going to satisfy what we need.
Right. So if they come up with a good vision, then, and then, and we decide that's what we want, then we fund it. That's, we do that all the time. That's what we did with, I mean, we, we spent $10 million in, in fall of 15 with that same idea. You had a vision for where parks would, would go and how they would be improved, and we borrowed money and funded them. So I don't, I don't see why you would resist.
No, I understand what you're saying.
That kind of opportunity for a community group to come in with a proposal. What I don't want is the community group to have to say, well, we can't raise $600,000 so we can't put our idea in. And what I want is their idea, and it, and if it costs too much money, we can reject it then, but we should be the ones rejecting it. It shouldn't be rejected before it gets to us.
I, I guess I agree with that. The one thing I do think is a little unrealistic is that we're going to get community groups that are going to raise a whole lot of money. I, I don't think it's realistic to think that we're going to get somebody's going to give.
And my idea is not that we, that the community group has to, let's use the idea of the, what I'm calling the, the postmodern restoration, which is that you're taking elements of the building and restoring them. And what I haven't, the vision of that, that I have and that others have, is that the site could become a combination of new and old. There would be old elements restored in ways that are, you know, it's not a kitchen. Nobody's serving meals there. There could be an amphitheater in there. There could be a small meeting space. And that's our obligation as a township to fund it. People have that vision. This is their opportunity to communicate it to us.
And an RFP will allow them to do that, and their funding mechanism would be, would have to be public funding. But they, you know, that you can't, that, that would be responsive to the RFP. That's their idea. How would it be funded? Public funding. So I don't, I don't, I mean, I think anybody who answers this RFP is going to have to be presenting their vision, and they also have to be presenting how it would be paid for, whether it's public or not.
Don, does that satisfy?
No, I don't think we're going to get a, I think we're going to exclude groups. If, how we write this will define who responds to it. So, so we can work out the details when the time comes, but in the last RFP, we excluded lots of good ideas, not intentionally. There was nothing nefarious. And, and I am afraid that if we, if we write another RFP that just has a, is scaled down from what we did last time, we're going to exclude other, other good ideas. Adding a paragraph, you know, that is a request for concepts or a request for visions, I don't see how, in fact, why don't you do that? Why don't you add it? And if you don't, when you, when you approve it, you can take it out if you don't like it.
That's fine, let's do that.
Mr. President.
So I'll amend my, I'll amend my motion to, in the, in the draft, add a request for concept aspect of it.
Okay, thank you. Bob?
In my usual, in my usual way.
Need a second for that?
Yes, we do.
I'll second it.
You do it now, thank you.
In my usual way, and I apologize. Hearing all the conversation here, would the board entertain a, a motion to authorize proposals to take the mansion down, scrape the site and then start anew? Because I think there's so much visioning on, I think the building has really no value anymore. To try to retrofit that building, you can't anymore. I think it would be best just to take the building down and then start anew.
I don't think we're there yet, Bob.
Wouldn't we just, if we got to that, wouldn't we just start with a, I mean, that's something we'd do with a, a means guide, correct? Meaning you just estimate that.
I think we already have what the cost is, which I think Steve has a cost somewhere about $150,000, I think from your estimate.
So I don't know that we need a proposal to tear it down.
No, I mean, what we could do is just go out for bids and just have it and then to me.
We're not there yet, but we're talking about an RFP. We're, we're giving it another try.
But, but even with, with that, is to try to retrofit what we have there, I, I think the structure just isn't there to do what we want to do. But that's just my opinion.
Okay.
Well, Bob, we'll, we'll get to that point when we get there. All right. Board discussion on Elaine's motion?
The only thing I would add to that, if, I would really like to see like a shanah clear, if they're going to keep the building, have someone who's going to preserve and operate it as a private foundation and have some, have some gardens, maybe that that would be an alternative as well, in addition to the visions or, or other concepts. But that's, the, the concept that Brickley already had with the, as you said, the postmodern, I call it a deconstruction, but.
No, but I was trying to be positive.
Okay, all right, but, but that concept.
When you call it a deconstruction, it's already lost.
Or, or, or.
I had to make up a fancy term.
Okay, all right.
There's a better one, so if you have a better one.
Construction, what, what, can I, what was the term you said?
I called it a postmodern reconstruction.
Postmodern reconstruction, that's a good idea.
And I'm open to alternatives.
Or something like, something like shanah clear, if that would be possible to have them, I, I just, I think that we, we saw it with the Conservancy was not able to raise a lot of money to, to buy Ardrossen. As a matter of fact, they didn't, they haven't contributed anything or very little, even with former presidents from the Conservancy on the board. I doubt we're going to be able to get hundreds of thousands for Willows. I just don't think it's a practical solution. So I think that, as, out of necessity, that, that Don's motion is real, Don's addition needs to be included.
Great, I think it already is, but let's have public comment.
Leslie Morgan Ward, one. I do have some positive news. I hope you all read Philly.com over the weekend and saw that Westchester, and as I know that their demographics are far less than us, meaning in my world, demographics are average household income and, and age, they were able to raise $200,000 on a $1.2 million purchase price. And what they did was really great. And, you know, you see this in Lower Marion, and everybody around us can raise private funds in hundreds of thousands of dollars. So maybe what Sarah's right, slow down. Maybe you guys need to caucus in private. Maybe it's your message, what you're sending. I, there's a theory out there that some boards in the country, when they can't raise private funds for great ideas, they're crowding out private donators. I'm sure Radnor has a lot of wealthy people that will donate to good ideas. I know they do. So maybe with what happened with Ardrossen is you crowded out them by running ahead too quickly. And many times boards say, look, we love this idea, we want to save the Willows, but we got to raise this at this date. And they do talk like that, Elaine. I know you may not like it, but they do talk to their constituencies. They give them an end date, they give them a goal, and, you know, just like, look at it, Westchester, on 20% of the purchase price was raised by private donators. You should look at it, Philly.com. And it happens everywhere. It happens all over Chester County. So why not Radnor, I have always asked? Why, are we stingy? I don't believe that. Are we poor? I don't believe that. If we're so exceptional, why not us? Thank you.
Thank you.
And I did see that article, too. I can forward that to you if you like.
Forward it to all of us, please.
Jane Gally, Barclayton Road.
I just have one observation. It sounds like everyone is chasing their tail here. And, you know, we don't want it, we don't want it to be not private, or we don't want it to be private, we want it to be public, but we don't want to pay for it, we want to find someone else who wants to pay for it. It's like, if nobody wants it, then it should be, well, Bob's gone, but anyway, then knock it down and start all over again. I mean, it, it's like, no one wants to pay for it, and no one wants to fix it because you had an RFP that was so high that no one could manage it, could get a bank to give them money for it. It, I don't, that's just my observation.
Thank you. Vote on this. Elaine amended a motion, wants you to restate it for us.
To direct staff to do a draft of an RFP that will, that will start from the, the RFP that we used for the last time, but scale it back to be more in line with Kruzberg and also include a clause that, or encouragement to do for a vision or a concept, concept.
And if you don't mind, including for the, the vision part, that it would, the, the building and the site would be exclusively park use.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, that was moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Seven to zero.
Very good, thank you. Before, before we move off, I would like to make sure that the group that Sarah had mentioned was able to use this, because I think it's an important part of the process and have it televised. And I would ask that we move, that we remove the fees associated with televising it and have the township pick it up so that we can facilitate that group to have another meeting.
I'd second that.
All right. Any board discussion on that?
What was that? Sorry, could you say it again? I'm sorry.
Certainly, I, I was moving that we waive the fees so that your group could come in here and without worrying about cost for having Jim televise it. I think it's an important thing because not only who was watching, who was here that night, but also who may be watching that night. And just as importantly, once it's on YouTube, anybody can watch it at any time. I think it's a good memorial record of the spirit as well as the substance of the meeting, and I would like to facilitate that and make sure that can happen. So we have a, been seconded. Any board discussion on it? Okay, public discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Great, passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next, we move on to community development. And Don, that's you, isn't it?
Yes, it is. How did you want to proceed? Do you want to hear from the applicant first or is that the board's pleasure? So Dave, you want to take the podium and just summarize the, the situation as you see it?
Commissioner Curley, you have a, the proposed zoning amendment and the sketch plan later on. I mean, it would make sense that you deal with them both at the same time.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Any objections to that?
No objections here, any objections?
No, I think it makes sense.
Great, thank you.
This involves the University of Pennsylvania and its health system. I will recuse myself because in my law practice, that is one of my clients.
Thank you, Commissioner Higgins. So, thank you. Dave Falcone with Saul Young here on behalf of the University of Pennsylvania. We have two items on the board's agenda tonight. One is a sketch plan for the property at 145 King of Pressure Road, which many of you sat through the biomed discussion. And then we also have a proposed zoning amendment, which was, which was circulated to all of you. The plan and why Mr. Rice had mentioned they should be considered together, our plan, our sketch plan is designed to the proposed zoning amendment. So really what we've, we've gone about is, we've participated in the discussions with the township's present PLO amendment, which has been in the works in front of the Planning Commission for, for, I'm sorry, for approximately 10 months. The Planning Commission has seen different variations of that ordinance. It's gone from an overlay to now a non-overlay and simply an amendment to the, the existing PLO. One of the components of that ordinance is a traffic neutrality concept, which is based upon a traffic number which is generated and calculated based on an office use on a site. And then a floor is created or, and then you meet or exceed that floor. It impacts your overall development. And that's how that ordinance is intended to control density on the site. There are issues, in our opinion, with the enforceability and the viability of that concept. We've, we've had discussions with members of the staff, with, with commissioners, and we think there are better ways to control density, control traffic, and then get at the ultimate goal, which we understand to be a mixed use within the PLO without, as some have described it, blowing up the PLO. And what we did then was we went back to the existing PLO ordinance, and we saw in that ordinance what we thought were viable components. Then we also went back to the Planning Commission's ordinance, or, or the ordinance which is presently pending before the Planning Commission. And we, we extrapolated from there what we thought could be a good use of some of the language in that ordinance. And we came up with what we've drafted. And what that ultimately does is create a mixed use in the PLO without an overlay, and it caps density. And by capping density at a certain square footage of gross floor area per acre, you are maxing out what you can have with respect to any use on a site, irrespective of the traffic generation. So if you take the most intense use on the site, which in this ordinance would be office, and that traffic generation where the current ordinance from the township establishes that for your traffic neutrality, and we say, "Okay, well, that's the worst it can be." Once you get to that point, anything below that, per the concept of traffic neutrality, would be a better use on the site. Our ordinance does exactly that by capping use at 25,500 square feet of gross floor area per acre on a site. We used the biomed preliminary approval that had been vetted by the Planning Commission was ready to come to you all at the end of the year, which is now just tabled. And what that had was 475,000 square feet of office on this site. So when you use our calculation, which is 25,500 square feet of floor area, you get to 475,000 square feet on this site. There is no use component to that. That is a cap on floor area. So then we said, "Okay, if we developed it entirely as office, we'd be exactly as you are with the present biomed plan. You'd have 475,000 square feet of office. You'd have the traffic that is generated from 475,000 square feet of office. That would be our traffic neutrality number anyway." So this site would produce for you exactly what it could under the current PLO zoning. Then we said, "What if we can incorporate other uses on the site? What would that do ultimately to your traffic?" It would bring it down, based on the traffic neutrality understanding. But in no event would this township ever yield more density on that site. What traffic neutrality doesn't do is protect against increased density. It protects against perceived increased traffic, based on peak hour generation. So if you have ultimately 550,000 square feet, but it's a mix of uses, because now you're using age-restricted residential, you're using a retail, and you're using a hotel along with existing office, you're increasing density with the hope that it's going to create less traffic. We think that's a dangerous proposition. We think members of this board would also support that, and we think your staff would support that concept, that it creates a dangerous density proposition. So we thought the first step to do would be to cap that density. Once we got over that hurdle, there were other issues in the, in the present ordinance before the township, which being the one presently in front of the Planning Commission, that worked against what we thought was smart development of the site. What I will note is, the current PLO ordinance would allow for 55% lot coverage. The pending ordinance, both from the township and the University of Pennsylvania, reduces that by 10%. So there's the trade. When you increase your height and you reduce your setbacks, you're generating more green space for 10% less coverage. That is part of the ordinance. So now, any property in your PLO to be redeveloped is going to give you 10% less coverage, which we understand is important to this township. More green space manages stormwater. That is what, you know, we're forward-thinking like the present ordinance before the Planning Commission. So when we designed our site, we designed it around those parameters. We designed it around a mixed-use concept, but if it were to go to all office, whether it be medical office or general office, because under your current ordinance, that's the same use. There is no distinguishing characteristics between a medical office and a general office. We also think they should be distinguished. But if it were developed under the current ordinance, that's what you would get. So we went along and we defined medical office, because again, we think this is a different type of use than you might generally think a medical office would be. And we've had those discussions with the Planning Commission, but that's why we felt it important to define it more clearly in our ordinance. A couple of the other highlights from our, from our ordinance, and I'm going to turn it over to my architect here, who can walk through more conceptually what the sketch plan looks like, and then I think we can have a general discussion of the overall ordinance. But it will put some concrete pictures to the commission's mind, so that you can see how this actually impacts the site versus just how it looks on paper. But a couple of the things that are important distinguishing factors between our ordinance and the existing PLO. I would say number one is your height. Right now, you have 38 feet in the PLO. We are proposing 85 feet. Your Planning Commission's ordinance is also proposing 85 feet for buildings. We're proposing 55 feet for parking structures, so long as they do not go above the existing building height. Our setbacks are being reduced. Again, we think that's important, because we think allowing for more green space with buildings more spread out provides for a more aesthetic and more capable site with respect to stormwater. We proposed, the next area that I would consider to be important would be signage. One of the, and we basically mirrored the Planning Commission's ordinance with respect to signage, with one exception, and that being the, what they've defined as the corporate signage. We believe there should be one corporate identification sign per building. Your Planning Commission agrees. Where we differ is in whether or not that sign should be lit. So Penn has done a similar sign to this, and it's up along 202 in a different township. And that building is at the top of, near the corner, nor the top of the building, and it is lit, and we believe that's appropriate. The Planning Commission does not want to see that sign lit. But other than that, our signage mirrors your planning commissions. So there's no questions for me. Again, I think it's important to hear from Eric Swanson with Ballinger. He can walk you through just the sketch plan, and then you'll see kind of how this ordinance actually takes shape.
David, one question before you move to that.
Yes, John.
Sure. The proposed ordinance that's been worked on by the Planning Commission and the consultant doesn't apply to the entire PLO, from what I remember.
It does now. It didn't at first. It was just an overlay concept. Now, it's been amended to apply to the entire PLO. But what that ordinance also does, John, is it breaks, it breaks the PLO into sites 10 acres or greater, and then smaller than 10 acres, and it applies different regulations to those properties. But it does apply to the entire PLO.
And you didn't think that was an important distinction when you developed yours?
We do not think that's an important distinction. We think every property should be treated the same within the district. Because really, when you start to separate properties by acreage, you're really just targeting a few properties in the district with a more restrictive ordinance.
Good evening. I am Eric Swanson. I'm an architect with Ballinger. And so I will also be joined by Mike Kissinger from Pinoni, who is with, a civil engineer, who will talk more about the technical aspects of the sketch plan. For overall orientation, we're talking about the site on King of Prussia Road, across the street and down from the existing Penn Medicine site, and adjacent to the Blue Route, to its east, and the SEPTA Route 100 rail also to its east, and then coming from the intersection of Lancaster Avenue and King of Prussia Road. View of the existing conditions, again, our arrival from Route 30, looking north on King of Prussia Road, the opposite direction, the existing main entrance, and the current conditions on the site, where, again, to sort of meet current zoning, the buildings are in the middle of the site with parking all the way around them. This is a plan that we actually presented to the Planning Commission back in August of last year, and we haven't really changed it since that time. So again, for orientation, this time, King of Prussia Road is along the bottom, the railway at the back of the site, and the Blue Route slicing across the right-hand, upper right-hand corner. In this proposal, Penn Medicine will take about half the site. Again, we're talking about almost 19 acres. They would take the southern side of the site, develop a six-story building here with an associated and attached parking garage. The left-hand side, we've shown as office space, again, with structured parking. And what you can see is, we've sort of turned the existing development inside out, in order to take advantage of the lesser setbacks, and to make a large, central, usable green space in the middle of the campus. The main entrance would stay where it is today, except be realigned so that it does align with Raider Way across the road. So all visitors and employees would primarily enter on that site. We do still maintain the access to the SEPTA rail on the northern side of the site. And on the southern side of the site, the entrance closest to Lancaster Avenue is really for service vehicles only. It has an ambulance, ambulet drop-off area, as well as our loading dock at a lower level. This is a rendering of what the buildings might look like. Again, we're looking for a very green development that would maintain existing plantings and enhance the plantings along King of Prussia Road, create this large, central quad, have green roofs on the buildings, and potentially green walls on the garage as well. Again, you're looking across the site towards the Blue Route there in the back. Dave mentioned earlier that this is not just a medical office building. This has got ambulatory spaces in it, including large parts of the building which will have radiology, surgery center, and radiation oncology. So it's, it doesn't have the same density of use as a lot of medical offices, where you just have a lot of exams and treatment spaces. This has large areas where patients are seen over a longer period of time and require more space for those procedures and treatments.
What does that mean? Over a longer period of time? Days? What, weeks?
It's an ambulatory building, so they're only there for the day, but they may have a short surgery procedure. Or they may be receiving cancer infusion, and that can be up to three, three or four hours.
It's a longer period of time versus what?
Versus a primary exam, where you have a lot of turnover and a lot of cars coming and going, and office visits may only be 15 minutes.
I've never had a doctor's appointment that was 15 minutes, so I, I don't, I don't think that, maybe that happened pre-ACA, but not anymore.
These are some views of what the buildings might look like. Again, it's about six, sorry, six stories above grade, the 85 feet, consisting of two volumes interlocking. One volume parallel to King of Prussia Road, and the other perpendicular to it.
Take a look at that. Who's, is that Ballinger that came up with that landscaping plan right there?
Those are existing trees that are there, and some, there would be more landscaping space, but we've, we've more trees in the future. We've removed some to so you can see the building.
But those are the existing weeds that are in? I, I don't understand this landscaping right here, and I talked with Kevin about this. This does not look neat, right? This doesn't, this, this isn't, isn't a manicure. This isn't a prepared area. Sure, we can keep the trees, but that looks like it's wild growth.
Those are referred to in the business as wildflower meadows, and we would have a mowed edge to the walkway along there. Again, these are for discussion. These are preliminary views. But more and more places are using them because they require less energy for mowing, and they are, and less pesticides. They're healthier environments, particularly for the pathway that's proposed to cross the site.
It just doesn't, when you look at that building with that landscaping.
I don't think that's the point tonight. We, we can discuss.
Well, I think it is. I mean, you put it up, so I think it is the point, you know, that that's something that, that, that really doesn't capture what the concepts that we talked about.
We appreciate that, Rich. So really, what we're trying to do, though, and this is just a rendering, again, for focus purposes, and we will get to all those things in the event we can move forward with an ordinance, and ultimately with a land development plan. These are all the things that we would discuss as part of that plan, which you understand. But right now, it's conceptual as part of an ordinance, but we hear your comment with respect to the plantings, and we'll be sure to address that when we get to land development.
Another view, look past the greenery. This is an entrance from heading south with the potential for a retail spot on the corner of the entrance. And then you can see the drop-off, the main entrance for, for Penn Medicine. And then finally, a view inside the courtyard, looking parallel to the parking garage and back at the Penn Medicine building, again, having a large public green area in the middle of the site. This was a model that we showed at the, at our August meeting, again, sort of showing the layout of the buildings, the Penn Medicine, the two bars on the right, and then what was shown then were some office buildings. As Dave said, we are entertaining, or Penn Medicine is entertaining other uses and developers for that half of the site. Again, views. And just a quick view of a similar development Penn has recently completed downtown at 3737 Market Street. Modestly mixed-use development where it has the same sort of retail base to it. It's adjacent to office buildings, and the office uses appreciate being close to a medical center, so that they have research kinds of practices that are right next door. You can see how a modern office building that Penn is building has a lot more light and air, a lot more natural light into the treatment spaces, as well as incorporating art, green roofs, and lead-designated buildings. Some ideas for what that interior courtyard might look like. Again, encouraging use of, and people to stay on-site during the day, rather than go outside, outside into the traffic. And some idea about materials, again, sort of a masonry, kind of masonry-like base to the building, and glass at the top, and a green screen for the garage. If there are no questions on that, I'll turn it over to Mike to walk through the sketch
Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Michael Kissinger with Pinoni Associates. A lot of information Dave and Eric have covered, so we're going to go through some of this information a little quicker. But in terms of the site plan, as you can see up there, is, this is the existing conditions survey that was shown on one of Eric's slides, just a more detailed of the, of the layout. A few things to point out on this plan are the existing driveway location. So you have an existing driveway location, first day with a clicker. The, you see the existing driveway location on the plan right, which is south, closest to Lancaster Boulevard, or Lancaster Avenue. And then on the far side, you have, again, an entrance back to the train facility area and a large surface lot. And additionally, right in the middle, you have the third access point for the existing biomed facility. This site is a, it has a lot of surface parking. It is large areas of impervious on both sides, with buildings straddled in the middle. One of the things that Eric pointed out was that trying to flip the building inside out, or flip the site inside out, putting the buildings on the outside, and really reclaiming some impervious by putting in some more green area in the center of those buildings, and allowing those buildings to really benefit from that additional green space. What you can point out here is that the existing entrance on both plan right and plan left are maintained. And however, one central access point lines up with the access point across the street, which I believe is a difference from the biomed plan, the previously proposed biomed plan as well. So the Penn project lines that driveway up very nicely with the access across the street. Again, this is just a, more of a black and white version of what Eric was showing before. And again, this is a little bit of a blow-up of that. Some of the information on the plan that you have before you, in terms of the zoning plan, or zoning chart on that sketch plan, just runs through a lot of the dimensional items on the existing ordinance, as it states today. This point, this chart does not contemplate any of the amendments before you. And based on that.
Could you explain what you meant by that last statement?
This is the current ordinance that's in place today. This does not include the, as Dave referred to it, as the Planning Commission ordinance that is before them, and it does not, it does not reference the amendment that Penn is proposing as well. This is just based today ordinance.
We have three headings, allowable, existing, and proposed. Could you define those?
The allowable column is what's in your ordinance today, as enacted. The existing is what the existing conditions of the plan show, and propose is what our Penn Medicine would propose.
With the sketch plan, but not the, but not the ordinance?
These are physical construction numbers, so it only refers to.
So it does not refer to the ordinance that you're proposing?
Correct. I apologize for that confusion.
Proposed site you're talking about is based on the ordinance, so it does relate to the ordinance that is proposed.
I think we're using ordinance three different ways there, but ordinance as it is today, on the website as published, is what is reflected in this chart as allowable. The ordinance that we're referring to as the re-amended PLO ordinance, that is in front of the Planning Commission, and the ordinance that we're talking about with, with Dave about the amendment to just a PLO for Penn, are both amendments to that base ordinance. So this plan, allowable column, only refers to your enacted ordinance as of today.
Well, hold on, Elaine. So, so what does the proposed relate to in this chart? And so, and why are you showing us this chart?
The proposed column is strictly the constructed amount, so regardless of what.
But the constructed amount relating to what of those ordinance?
The site. It has nothing to do with the ordinances at all.
Okay.
The right.
So what's existing then?
It hasn't, it's, it's what exactly exists today. The amount of square foot of impervious that's there today, the amount of asphalt that's there today, is covered under that chart.
Well, then what's proposed? Well, then what's proposed? You just said it's existence what's there today.
Maybe I can explain it a little bit differently. So you've, were you all clear on what the allowable is? So that's your current ordinance as drafted. Existing would be what you would normally see on an existing conditions plan as part of a land development application. A developer would come in and say, "These are your existing conditions on the site before we put the shovel in the ground." So that's the existing column. Penn has done nothing, has changed nothing, we're just giving you the calculations based on what's on the site today. That's your existing column. And then like any other developer, we're saying to you, if we were able to build our proposed plan, the plan you see in your sketch, the numbers would now look like they do on the right-hand side of the column. So the existing and the proposed can never coexist. They're just there for reference purposes so that the board can see what the change would be versus the existing condition and the proposed condition post-development.
I think we got it, but where does the ordinance come in, at your proposal?
So the ordinance comes in, we wanted the board to see, because your consultants have provided review letters based only on the existing ordinance, because that's really all they can provide. So our proposal, our development would be completely compliant. That's what we've proposed, that's how we've developed the site. However, if our ordinance were rejected, and the planning commission's ordinance were rejected, whole cloth, we would be faced with this chart, and the next page would be the variances that would be required for us to develop pursuant to our plan. And that's what you're, that's what your consultants have provided you in your packet. A review letter based upon the existing ordinance.
Which is allowable? Which is your allowable column?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. So again, moving to the next, as Dave alluded, these would be the variances required or requested from the Penn development as shown on the sketch plan if both amendments were rejected. So as you can see from these, they refer to building placement and depth of the site as well as height. So you can see what those changes are. They're really just a point of reference, and as Dave mentioned, we are in receipt of the township review letters, which Dave walked away with, from both your consultants. Dated March 29th for Gannett Fleming and March 24th from Gilmore. And we would look forward to working these out with the consultants as they move forward. We don't see anything in here other than what we've outlined here. But again, we don't want to speak for your consultants, and we would work through those during the land development or appropriate time. Lastly, the last comment, the slide up there is about parking, just to show that we do comply with the underlying parking, mainly by removing a lot of the surface area again and providing a large amount of surface parking, I'm sorry, garage parking.
Is any of the garage parking underground? It's all garage above ground?
Looking at the plan, there is a sub, like this level here would be maybe, if you refer to it as minus one as compared to this entrance, those two entrances are at a different location. Part of it you would consider below ground. Just want to be as completely clear.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If I may, just a question or two. This is Penn Medicine, correct? It is. It's not the University of Pennsylvania Health System. It's Penn Medicine, correct?
What is the entity that we're talking about?
It's Penn Medicine, correct?
It's the trustees of the University of Pennsylvania.
There is no Penn Medicine? Because I know I see on here it says Penn Medicine Radnor, so my guess is this would be Penn Medicine or Radnor.
I think it is important, like, so what entity is the applicant? Is it just that you're saying it's the trustees is the applicant?
That's correct. They're the owners of the property.
The University of Pennsylvania is not a nonprofit, is not, no corporation for the University of Pennsylvania at all? Or is no entity? What, the University of Pennsylvania has got to be some entity. There's got to be divisions, there's got, I'm sure there's more than one.
There are divisions.
There are divisions, or is there a corporate, is a Pennsylvania nonprofit with subsidiaries? Or is it just?
Can I ask what the relevancy of it is? It might be relevant.
Well, the relevance.
I'm not, Bob, I'm not arguing with you. It's just, don't, let's not have a big discussion about what it is. You tell me why it's important and what the problem is, and then we'll address it.
The problem is, is when I see Penn Medicine Radnor, is I know there's a question regarding taxes. And the issue is, is the taxing entity here, when someone's coming with a proposal like this, I know we had issues with, you know, pilots and things like that, and universities saying that they're charities. So I just want to make sure that this is a charity that's coming in front of the township that's asking for relief.
I think it is relevant to the.
That's all, that's all I'm asking. Is this a charity that's asking for relief?
It depends on what entities we're talking about.
Well, so we're not asking for any relief, I should say that upfront. We're not asking for relief. We're proposing an ordinance. We aren't here, so that's.
But the entity, though, is asking for relief tax, so I saw, just what I just, I think what I'm, the only question I'm asking for, I think to Don's point, is the entity that's here proposing the ordinance change here, are they a charity or not?
They're the owner of the property.
Right. Are they a charity, though?
Yes.
They are a charity?
Yes.
Okay, so they give free medical care to everyone, then?
Can I just, you know, because.
Just asking the question.
The tax, the tax issue is going to be decided in another forum. This is the land use issue. My understanding is there is a, there's two trustees. There's a university side and there's a medicine side. No? Okay. That's what I've been told, that there's two trustees and, or there's two, there's two entities. One is the university, one is Penn Medicine. You need to come up to the mic, and that they're separate.
But I'll just, I'll kind of piggyback what Senator Rice just said. There's a totally separate process pursuant to which any tax appeal or tax exemption is being handled. It's not in front of this board, it's in front of the county, and then ultimately, the taxing authority will determine whether the ownership entity of this property is tax exempt. It's not for me to say, it's not for you to say, it's ultimately for the taxing authority to determine with the courts where any appeal would be held. We will abide by the determination of that process. We're not here tonight asking you to provide us a tax exemption, offering or asking for you not to provide us a tax exemption. We're really here to discuss a project, and we understand there's another process running simultaneously with what we're here tonight that will ultimately determine the taxable nature of this property and this owner. But the owner of the property is the trustees, and they are the applicant.
There is a component of this, though, that affects us, is that one of the, what's before us is to take a sizable portion of the property and use it in a manner that is not the charity's mission. And so presumably, that component would be fully taxable. And so, so I just don't see the rigid separation that you see. I see lots of link because part of the decision that we have to make is how willing are we to do this, given that this decision affects the taxability of the site? Rich, did I summarize it accurately? I think I'm trying to summarize what you and I discussed.
I think that's accurate. I think that there's definitely a relationship between what is being asked of this board and the final use and ownership of the property. And their considerations are significant, especially when we talk about issues of subdivision or leasing and different uses on the site. So I think it's a very relative, very relevant inquiry.
I'm not, I'm not debating the relevance of whether or not this property is taxable. What I'm saying is it's not for ultimately this board to decide, so we.
To be fair, you're asking us to consider new uses. And those new uses may have an effect on how a court looks at this property.
Sure, but so if not.
So that is very relevant to the decision of whether to allow that new use.
If the trustees were to simply use the entire property, which they have the right to do as the owner, and just build one office building and occupy the entire thing, then this discussion is moot.
Well, I don't.
Do they, if they have a plan?
I don't agree with that, because.
Then it goes entirely, it goes to the tax appeal.
Well, it's going to go to tax appeal, but the board, this board still has to decide. I mean, on one hand, you want to, my understanding is the whole property declared tax exempt. On the other hand, you're in front of this board for a new zoning amendment which would let you develop half of it for the medical use, the other half for some other use. So that's, it's a little bit unusual for Penn Medicine to be doing that, I think. Because as the board knows, Dave, as you know, this is legislation. The board doesn't have to do anything with this proposed zoning amendment. It can die on the vine. And I think that ought to be clear to Penn Medicine that that could happen. Or you could go and get, try to get three variances, or four variances, or whatever variances you need under the existing. But their vote ultimately, after it goes through the planning commission, is totally discretionary. Not even appealable.
Yeah, that's the, I think that's the point that some of us want to make here is that, that there is a tremendous amount of discretion, and it is, I don't think we're going to solve it tonight. I don't, in fact, I don't even want to have the debate tonight. But there's tremendous amount of discretion, and there's a link. And we have to decide how we're going to address, how we're going to use our discretion, given the link.
Well, I certainly agree that it's, there's a tremendous amount of discretion, without question.
Comments at this point?
Love comments.
Okay.
Unless, do you guys need to know kind of the structure? Kevin could provide that structure.
I don't think that we need to do that tonight. Okay, so I have some thoughts that I'd like to share with you as we move forward. The first one is, the, well, most of them come down to the basic fact that one of the uses that you're asking us to introduce is medical office. And I'm, I'm taking from the fact that you're seeking a variance, if you didn't get the ordinance, that you acknowledge that that is not an approved use under our current PLO. Our Gannett Fleming has opined that and said you need a variance, and you have in your papers that you would seek a variance. So when you, the way this ordinance looks to me is that it's not mixed use, it's adding uses. So you can add uses at your pleasure, but there's not any sort of dictated balance or, or formula for having a mixed use. And the premise of the neutrality that you've worked in is that it's already zoned for the worst-case scenario. It's already zoned for office space. And I am afraid that that's not true. I, when we went through this rodeo the first few times, it became apparent that medical office use was far worse than office use. And we had trip generation numbers given to us. I had recently asked Amy to pull them out again so that I could refresh my memory. And indeed, the ITE numbers for medical office use are worse than office. So my fear is that it's a false premise to say, to design the ordinance with that density, you know, the 25, five square foot per acre parameter, assuming that office is the worst use. And so, so in theory, if that, if we went with this ordinance, the whole site, this whole site or any site in the PLO could all be built out with one use, medical office, and it would be far worse than anything we could imagine under just office. So that's just a theory. I mean, I don't think any site would build out like that, but it's possible. And even on this site, we have really no way of knowing what's going in those other buildings, if it's subdivided out or whatnot, and that could also be all medical office, which would be far worse than office. So my, I guess what I'm coming to here is I am uncomfortable with an ordinance that does not protect against all medical use or all any use that is worse than what we have now under our regular PLO. On the surgical use, or you called it urgent care use, I don't, we've never seen traffics, ITE numbers for that, I don't believe. We saw them the first time around, so I can't, I can't speak to that. But again, that could be better or worse than office, which is what we're stuck with now. Another thing that made me nerve, made me a little uncomfortable was the gross, the gross floor area, not including any atriums. It seemed like a very, it didn't seem like a realistic gross floor area number. So I felt like that 25,000 number was sort of inflated because it didn't include atriums and open spaces, which most, I mean, if you go into the Perlman Center now at, in Penn, that's a great deal of atrium and open space. So I think that we would have to address that. I, in general, I, the driving factor of the whole two, three-year exercise with that must ordinance was traffic neutrality. And I don't feel secure from this ordinance that we will achieve traffic neutrality without somehow controlling the mix of uses. I don't, I will never be comfortable with a, with an ordinance that allows for a single use, you know, complete build-out of a single use, that, especially one that could be worse than office. The increased height, I actually do not have a problem with. I have not had a problem with any of the permutations of the plans on this property. And I would trade height for increased green space pretty much any day, especially in a location like that. One sort of piddly thing, you know, some of the setbacks that were, some of the setbacks that were, had to do with being next to residential properties were explicitly only set if there was, it was currently existing residential property. But the way that this would play out is that over time, PLO properties that are next to each other would eventually, even though they're not now residential, could eventually have residential aspects to them. So for instance, if you have one property that's next to this property, and it gets redeveloped as a independent living or a, whatever the other residential categories were, now you have residential next to you, and now we have very tight setbacks, right up to residential, that we would not have allowed if it was existing residential. And that's something I think we have to guard against and be careful about if we're going to allow residential as one of the uses in this PLO. Those are my main comments. I mean, my biggest concern is the medical office use, the traffic it's going to generate, from what, everything we have heard, and we can, we can reiterate that tonight if we want to, in fact, why don't we? Amy, would you speak to that? I mean, this is, the memory that I have, this is the chart that you recreated, and is this a reality that medical offices?
Well, the chart that I had created was basically looking at 100,000 square foot of medical versus 100,000 of general office. Typically, medical office, you're going to find a smaller size footprint, but we're going to assume that there would be multiple units that would be in here that could potentially equal that 100,000. And it gave us the ability to look at them each on a fair basis, meaning square footage. So for the AM peak hour, the general office brings in 191 trips in and out for the AM peak hour with 239 for the medical dental office rate. And the evening, we have 190 for the peak hour for general office, while we have 357 for the medical dental office. And then if you look at this on a 24-hour basis, you have 1,313 for the general office and 3,613 for the medical dental office. You know, there was a little bit more information talking about when these surveys were taken, but this is just what we typically use when we're looking at trip generation for any types of uses. And they are national standards that we follow.
Okay. So it's a significant difference. And I'm not, I'm not saying that this is not an insurmountable problem. It's just something that we, I would want to see in this ordinance controlling, if we're going to allow a medical use, controlling for somehow making that use, the traffic that's generated from that use must be offset by some lesser use of a traffic. And if you have an ordinance that only puts one use, you know, allows you to do just one use, we'll never get that. Having said all of that, I like the plan. I think it's a good-looking plan. I like your landscaping evening. I'm a big fan of the. your landscaping evening, I'm a big fan of the wildflower meadows. And I hope we can make this work. But as drafted, I have real, real concerns about the ordinance, and the allowance of medical use, medical office, excuse me.
Yeah, and I have some similar, similar concerns. So first, I, I think this alternative that you've presented is better than the versions, the attempts that we made at this, with the must, and with the traffic neutrality concept. So it's, it's going to be easier for us to protect against the things that we find harmful in the version, something that resembles like what you provided, than in either of the two other iterations. And then, also, the, the plan that you provided, is better than the existing. And what I've heard through the three-year process of this, is that our zoning forces the building into the middle, that makes the building a relatively big square, and surrounds it in parking. And generally, I think that's a mistake, to have, have a site like that. What I'm hearing both you and the previous landowner say, is that you wanted a campus-like effect. So I am in favor of modifying the zoning to create that campus-like effect. And I think that the plan that you show demonstrates why, that it's a better plan than that square in the middle, surrounded by concrete. So now, some of the concerns that I have. So one, as, as I read the proposal, we could eliminate PLO. Meaning that, as Elaine indicated, you opened it up to other, other uses, they need not be the current PLL uses, PLO uses. So consequently, we have eliminated PLO, and I don't want to do that. I want to keep PLO, and I want to augment it with other uses, that will be beneficial to the township. So the question then becomes, how do we do that? But, so, the second point is, well, we do that through mixed use. And essentially, the way I would view doing it, is List A is the, is, is the baseline, what you can do now. List B are these other alternatives, that you, you've presented, you created that list, that expand what you can do. For, for us to approve List B, we have to be reasonably confident, that the traffic impact of B is less than A. And so then, what happens is, that you have, imagine that big square in the middle, when you replace some of that use, with an item from List B, by rule, the traffic has to get better. The building might stay the same, and arguably, might even get marginably bigger, marginally bigger, but the traffic would have to go down, because the use is a, a use that is more, less problematic, from a traffic standpoint. Like Elaine, and like others, there's got to be like a do-no-harm clause in this for us, that if this becomes too complex, to know that we're doing the right thing, then it's off the table for me, and I'm back to the baseline zoning. You know, the good news is, that I think we can get to something that makes me comfortable. I was not comfortable with the must, I was not comfortable with what I saw, our previous iteration. I believe that we can take what you provided, and get me to a sense of comfort. The two complaints that I've heard in the process, that predated you, meaning when, when your predecessor came to us. One is, big box versus campus. I'm agreeing that campus is preferable to big box. And the second concern that I, I've heard both applicants say, is that we don't have, there isn't a demand for 500,000 square feet of scientific use, of PLO use. And so, in order to use the property, in an efficient manner, an effective manner, we have to augment the uses. So I'm, I'm agreeable to that, I'm agreeable to the concept that you're presenting to us. The fifth item is the setbacks. You're asking for what I see as a considerable relaxation of the setbacks, I think that makes sense. I think the setbacks are what give us that big box, surrounded by concrete. The, the one caveat to that, and it might not affect you, I don't know that it will affect any property owners, and it speaks to the point Elaine made, is that if there is a residentially-zoned district that borders on, on PLO, then I'm not in favor of relaxing the setback. Because we don't get complaints from commercial property owners about, we get much less complaints from, you know, one commercial property owner to another. What we get is residential property owners complaining about commercial activity. So I would like to keep the current setback that PLO has on, against residential, keep that where it is, but give you the capability to relax the other setbacks, to move the building around the site, or buildings around the site, as you see fit. The sixth item for me is, is this idea of a trigger. So I, I am also comfortable with the building going up, but we need the code to reflect that if the building goes up, the impervious cover comes down, and the buildable lot area comes down. We, we need to know what we're trading. So if we allow you to make the building bigger, then, then by, by rule, the amount of impervious cover has to go down. So I envision, kind of like a, a sliding scale, or iterations of, if the buildings are 85, at 38 feet, you have, you know, 45% max lot coverage. At 85 feet, you have 40% lot coverage, and perhaps something in between. The idea is that everyone knows that if, if the applicant makes the building bigger, the township gets the footprint constrained, and more green space in the lot. The seventh item for me is the issue of the parking structure. So not your application, but the previous applicant, we had a disagreement on, on how that language should be interpreted. I, I would, I like the, the interpretation that the applicant did not provide, which is that the, you know, the, the capability to put underground parking was limited to, or structured parking was limited to the relief of surface parking. It wouldn't let you get, make the building bigger. So I, I see this as an opportunity to clarify that issue. So then, the proposal, what I think we can do differently, to make this more agreeable to me. The first is, in the, in the recital section, I would keep that, this is of the current ordinance, I would keep that in its current form. I would simply augment it with two, with one or two points about the inclusion of mixed use. You've kind of rewritten the recitals, I, I don't want to rewrite it, I want to keep PLO, all I want to do is augment it with, with different uses. I want to expand the uses, I want to keep PLO, so I think we have to have a minimum amount of PLO. Meaning, List A is the current PLL uses, and that's 51% to 100%. List B are the other uses, and that's 0 to 49%. And, but, at the end, what we have to know, is that this site is predominantly PLO. I don't want to change the PLO zoning, I just want to augment it with other uses. I do think that your list of 12 items that we would use to expand it, is too broad at this point. I'd like to constrain that down to six or seven. We can work through the Planning Commission, you know, to see if those should be put back in. But the baseline that I think we should send to the Planning Commission, should be constrained considerably, and then let Penn Medicine make that argument to the Planning Commission, to put it in, as opposed to us making the argument as to why it should come, come out. So, and then, my next item is, what I'm going to call a trigger, or a cap. So this again, speaks to a concern that Elaine had. Well, first, the trigger. If, we have to know that we're getting less traffic, we're allowing you to make the, the building bigger, we have to have reasonable certainty, that there will be less traffic, or make the building higher. And the way that we get that, is by knowing that you're substituting the, the traffic-friendly uses, for the traffic-problematic uses. So, to me, for, there's, there's like a trigger, if you're going to use the mixed use, there has to be a minimum amount, whether that's 20% or 25%. But it's something that we can point to, they say, well, why did you let, the, the building is now 85 feet tall, and we can say, yes, but we got, we got 105,000 square feet of these uses, which has a positive impact on traffic, relative to, to office. And then, the idea of the cap, I very much like that idea of a cap. I understand that was your idea, and that gives us that certainty, that we know that the building can't get too big, because there is uncertainty in this. Whether 25,000 is the right amount, that remains for us to be, you know, to be seen, but I like the idea of a cap. So, the next step, as I see it, is for you to take this feedback, there's probably going to be some feedback from us, to try to, to give you a sense of incorporating these concerns, and then bringing us, bringing the, what I'm going to call the anchor, back to us. And then if the anchor is agreeable to us, we will send it to Planning Commission. And then, I guess I have one thing for us. We have to recognize that we're not going to get everything, there's seven of us, and none of, nobody here is going to get exactly what they want out of this. So we have to decide, we, there has to be some compromise here, also. Otherwise, we're going to end up with the zoning that facilitates the big box with, surrounded by parking. So, that's a lot.
That's great, thank you.
But you've got my input on it, and hopefully the Commissioners can...
All right. I'd like to go next. I only have 5% of my power left here, and no, no charger. First of all, one of the main concepts is, we need, if you're, if there's going to be mixed use, it should all be presented together. So, I disagree with the concept that we can actually subdivide, and then build something later, under mixed use. It seems to me that we would need to show any other mixed uses, and you would, if there's going to be a separate owner, it would be a land lease, perhaps. But I think Don pointed out to me, that you cannot have a non-conforming use after subdivision. And the concern we have with that, would be, if we do maintain Don's concept of 51% PLO, if you don't have a PLO in a subdivided property, then, and it's within the PLO, it would be non-conforming. So I see that as an issue, that the entire site should be presented as one plan of development, including the alternative uses, and I think that's important. Again, I also agree with, we don't, we don't want to replace the PLO, we want to augment the PLO. And really, minimal additional uses, and I really am, am looking at it, working with, with Dave, and with Kevin, and the folks. So, I mean, to me, it's kind of an accommodation, we can try to work with something here, for this site. But, it's, the point is not to obliterate the PLO, the PLO, I think is adequate and desirable zoning, in this area especially. I do think that mixed use should be accompanied by a size-of-site requirement. I don't think that it should reply to any site size, mixed use, as long as it's within the PLO. It should, there should be a, a site threshold, a size of the site threshold, which, you know, 10 acres, I think, sounds about right. I am concerned about the accessory uses. I, I would, I would want to have accessory uses within a mixed use, or additional use location, not separate standalone, separate uses for, especially for commercial, and other items that would compete with some of the local businesses, which we, we have a great deal of, of business in, in that area, okay, already. Also, multi-story parking garages. The concept that we've, we've always had, which I don't feel that we've ever lost, is parking garages are allowed, to the extent that you remove otherwise allowable surface parking. So I, I think that there was, there was some disagreement on that, but the concept is, right now, there's 800 site, 800 parking spots. If you're going to reduce the impervious surface parking, you would build a parking garage that would be commensurate, or would be, that 800, but you would be reducing that surface lot. So parking garages should only be allowed, to the extent that you are removing parking from the site, and making it more green, and less impervious. I, I don't share the, the fervor for higher buildings in this, in this site. I think 60 feet is, is plenty. But again, to the extent that height would be increased, it would need to be a reduction in the overall impervious or building area. And, and, and I think that there's a variety of ways to incorporate that concept, but I, I don't think that I, I see it in a fashion that I think is, is strong enough, based on what I reviewed. I, I also, I think that special signage provisions should not be incorporated here. I don't want to complicate this ordinance with separate signage requirements, I think that we can utilize the existing signage requirements. And then, I also would add, with the, especially with these larger sites, that there be a connection to existing trails, and landscape areas that would be available for, for the public, not just for the, the campus. And then, I would also like to review, so I'd, you know, I'm asking Dave and Kevin, for you to make, get me comfortable, and, and my constituents, that anything that we do here, will not cause a great deal of redevelopment of all the other PLO locations. PLO zoning is only in the second ward, and the intent of this was not to, to me, it was not to recreate and redevelop every PLO site. So I want to have some mixed use, well, I don't, I don't really even want to have the mixed use, but I will go along with the mixed use in these, in these instances, because I do believe that there could be some beneficial effect on the traffic and congestion in the area, from some mixed use. Although Elaine and Amy call that into question, when we talk about how much more traffic-intense the medical office numbers were. So, that, that is a concern, but, again, what I don't want this to do, is to cause a redevelopment of the other six PLO sites. I don't think that the PLO zoning should be consigned to the scrap heap of zoning history in Radnor. And I, I do believe that it's not desirable to make the other owners run out and want to redevelop their site. So, where I can envision some compatible mixed use, with a beneficial effect, I don't believe it's beneficial to encourage a wholesale redevelopment of existing sites. And I, and I think that we have, your old site, we're going to have to deal with immediately. So, the old Penn Med site, that, that site will, will be redeveloped, and will be subject to any revisions that we might change, any revisions to the ordinance, or to the zoning, with the exercise of the, of the Board of Commissioners' discretion. So I want to be particularly careful, and understand exactly the effect on any other
I don't want to discuss the ordinance too, too much, mainly because we've already spent a lot of time and a lot of money developing the new one, so I'd like to have, for me, a discussion with Steve Gabriel here, and I ask Bob to have him at the next meeting, is appropriate. But I want to talk about the sketch plan. I applaud the addition of the garages, especially on this site, back along the tracks, it's a perfect location. Then you have the Blue Root over there, so they really are not impactful to the neighborhoods. Also, it has eliminated surface parking, and that, that's a perfect trade-off. The problem I see on this site, for the height, and I don't generally have a problem with the height, as long as it, the building footprint is reduced, is that the elevation change from King of Prussia Road, up to that first building, is significant. So when you come along there, not only are you going to have an 80-foot building, but you probably have 30-foot of elevation difference between King of Prussia Road and the bottom. So the building is going to loom over the roadway. And for that reason, I would like to see the buildings pulled back a little further, and some of the green space... and some of the green space you're able to save would benefit the public rather than the occupants, if you will. And I agree that having these generalized uses for the parts you're not developing aren't acceptable. I think we need a commitment to specific uses or mix of uses. And that's all I have.
I, I think everything's been covered comprehensively, so I'm going to let it move forward.
Okay. Well, I'll just get a couple of comments. A lot has been said. I think you captured some good notes, I see you writing. Appreciate you doing that. Uh, of course, you can always watch the tape too, to get what you missed, I'm sure. But, but rather than add anything new, I do want to emphasize a couple of points then that I think are useful. One, to Elaine's point, I think adding mixed uses that, that are, that can be sub-optimized is problematic. You know, there's no control in here at the present moment for saying how much can be, you can sub-optimize at this point, if not you, anyone else that's part of this thing here. So we have to look at it not just from how you will do it, you know, it's a good plan, but how would others do it if they were also part of the same zoning regulations? So there, uh, we have to allow, make sure that, uh, one, one, one use doesn't get overemphasized. And so there's some measure of control here. Secondly, um, I think we have to look at the impact from other areas that are involved in PLO, how it affects them. Uh, we could ask staff to take a look at that, or perhaps Steve Gabriel will take a look at that, see how, what that impact is at this or subsequent versions of it. I like the idea of trading some height for, for less impervious. There should be a balanced air payoff in that regard, both for stormwater effects as well as, uh, how it looks. On the terms of traffic, I think this is probably one of the biggest ones, at least in my mind, to emphasize, that although we talk about traffic neutrality, I think we have to recognize that right now, traffic neutrality is not the standard of what it is right now. It's traffic neutrality of what it used to be when it was fully operational. And those are two different things that are long gone from our collective memories at this point. So if there's an opportunity, I think what would be bested is to end up with traffic reduction in some way, shape, or form, depending on your uses and how this thing gets done. To that effect, and I think that one is the one that affects not only what's in the second ward, which I appreciate, uh, that this is Rich's ward and he has to worry about that, but this is the idea that, that affects all wards. We've seen the effect of what happened when one piece all of a sudden gets overdeveloped or generates a lot of traffic. It really cuts the township in half. So it's a very serious problem that we have to look at and see what the impact would be. Um, the, uh, the other point is on the 85 feet, you may, you may want to end up looking at that. That sounds awful high, at least in terms of setting a precedent. Also, I want to make sure to look at what the fire department says and public safety to make sure that there's no new equipment that's required to be able to handle that in emergency situations. So we definitely want to get their opinion on that and in terms of what is optimal sizes. I don't think we want to end up with a PLO that ends up being that it's like a mini downtown Philadelphia, where everybody goes up high and we have a little corridor of that. I don't think that's the effect that we're looking for, nor you. But again, we have to look at it not just from what's important, what's going to happen on your site, but what happens on all the sites in PLO. So those are the ones that, that I want to emphasize, at least myself. I think you've got a great list from these folks, and, uh, let's see what you can do from that.
All right. Well, thank you all very much for this thorough, uh, comment period. We will do as Don suggested and take a look at our draft and, and work with you all. That's really the, the purpose of this process in our mind, is to start a collaborative effort to get to an ordinance that works. We think it's an important property in the township. We think Penn is, and can be, an important neighbor to Radnor and citizen in Radnor that can help this township. So we're hoping to develop a good collaborative relationship with respect to the development of this site. So thank you.
What do we see as next steps on this one?
As I see it, I mean, there's going to be some public comment to them, assuming, but then, uh, they need to take our comment and public comment, and then they need to, uh, recirculate a draft. I know I'm going to take the ideas that I expressed, and I'm going to reach out to some of you individually and explain how I, how I believe we can accomplish that. And then I'll do the same, I'll pass that on to, to Dave Falcone, and, and he just had, they, he's got a, this is art, not science for them. They got to figure out how to satisfy seven people. You know, is that correct?
Six.
Six.
Great, good. Thanks. Uh, it's enough for public comment. Thank you.
Lloyd Goodman from the Radnor Racket Club, they're a next-door neighbor. Uh, I mean, I've, most of, I've been to some of these meetings and the Planning Commission as well. Most of it sounds good to me, but it just sort of a few things tonight. Um, between Mr. Curly and Mr. Booker, the, on my site, which is only seven acres, the 51% at least offices would be terrible for my site, practically impossible because of my stream and riparian buffer. Uh, so to try to require that as part of a mixed use, uh, the way Mr. Gabriel has been doing it, the way Mr. Booker, I think, is supporting is saying, if you're under 10 acres or something else, which we are quite under, to not have to have, you know, to just have one use, especially if we have the age restricted or something like that, which would generally help the traffic immensely, and not have to put any offices. This is the way it's going with, you know, with the way the must is...
Well, that's something to think about. You're right that, uh, what I described would prevent that. But the, the issue with that is that that is the decimation of the PLO, which I think is a mistake. I don't want to eliminate PLO, I want to augment it.
Well, hopefully...
No, so existing uses would, wouldn't be affected, right? So not, existing non-conforming use wouldn't, wouldn't be affected.
No, but down the road, the, the indoor tennis club is not a very good use for the site in the future. I mean, for one thing, tennis isn't like it used to be, so that site is really just begging for something nicer too. I mean, I, it's not a nice, attractive building, I, I admit that, you know, compared to some of the neighbors. I mean, some parts of it are, the, the front, where the restaurant is and whatever, but clubhouse, but the tennis building itself is not attractive. So it could be a much nicer site, it could serve the community, uh, have, you know, different developers coming to me. It's not going to be developed for quite a few years because of the way the business is and, and some of the tenants. But to be forced to, to have 51% offices on that site, it just would really, I think, not be, be good for anybody.
Yeah. It's something to think about, but, so I'll think about that.
Okay, thank you.
And it's not like I'm, uh, you know, there's no decision made tonight.
No.
Um, but I will say the problem with that approach is that it, it'll, it ends PLO on your property, which is not, it's what I don't, I don't want the PLO landowners to be, to be out of the PLO business. To me, that's PLO and it has to stay PLO. Doesn't mean that there's not a solution that, you know, can improve your situation. We can think about that, but just sort of recognize the concern I have with the alternative that you provided.
Lloyd, how many acres is your property?
Seven. It'll be less once the, you know, you have the right-of-way taken away from the Camp Pressure Road.
And how many, um, of the other PLO properties are under 10 acres? Do you know offhand, Kevin?
I don't know, um, specifically. I'd have to take a look at that.
Yeah.
I think Steve Gab, yeah, I think Steve Gabriel's been saying three. I'm not sure.
Three? Three, including yours?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thanks.
And then just your one comment about the residential. I think what you're saying is if residential were developed in the PLO, like on my site...
That's, I was thinking of your site when I made that comment.
Yes.
Because all, right.
Well, but to, I, I think people that would live in such a structure, age restricted living or independent living, is much different than the single-family homes, which are really on some of the other areas abutting the PLO. People that would live in this type of structure, I don't think that they would need this large setback that I think the other, you know, the existing residential neighborhoods should have, like the must from Steve Gabriel was saying, I think it was 100 feet or something. I, I think people in this type of building, it's going to be some kind of mid-rise, four or five stories, I guess. Uh, I think they're okay with smaller setbacks. You know, they have the, like I was saying, the stream and the woods and the riparian. I mean, it's, could be really a beautiful place for that kind of use. And to be, you know, close to the Penn Med site, you know, with, if they each had the 25-foot setback as proposed, 50 feet and, you know, I, I think would be fine. I don't think you need to put the, that same, you know, extra setback just because it's residential, if it's in this PLO, within the PLO slash must, uh, area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. Well, we don't need to take an action, right? So, do you have any final statements or comments or questions that you have for us?
No, I think we've got good direction and, and we will, um, we'll work on our new draft and we'll look for comments. I guess, Don said he was going to provide some comments, so we'll look for those. And if any other commissioners would like to send along their thoughts or comments other than the notes I've taken, which were copious. So, we will be sure to incorporate them to the extent we can. And I, I will actually note though, that, um, we'll welcome having Steve at another meeting. You know, Steve has done a very good job to this point in shepherding the other ordinance through the Planning Commission. This is no, uh, no, we wish no ill will on that ordinance. We just think there is more viability to this ordinance to actually produce the result that the township wants. And we were kind of active participants and remain active participants in that discussion in the event that the board decides that's the better path forward. But we really do believe ultimately, there is a necessity to, to a cap, and we think that will ultimately drive us towards really what is the traffic concern. So, you know, we'll welcome to have Steve at that discussion as well.
Thanks for being part of that process. Thanks for your attendance tonight. Next up on the agenda is Public Works and Engineering, and who handles that?
I have that.
You have that one.
We have Resolution 2016-48, Final Approval of the Preliminary Plan for a redevelopment of the property at 427 East Lancaster Avenue. I think we have Mr. Brosman and Mr. Bremen present tonight. Do you want to come forward?
Good evening. I'm George Brosman, representing the applicant. Scott Bremen is here as well. Um, we're here for a preliminary plan approval. We do have a recommendation from the Planning Commission, and the resolution that is before you is acceptable to the applicant.
All right. As I, as I read it, you have to comply with all the laws and ordinances of the township. You also have, um, oh boy, it looks like about a dozen conditions that range from height of the building, steep slopes, curb radius, stormwater, traffic, and you're comfortable with all of those? You can, you can meet all of those?
Yes, you're referring to the, um, the comment letters that we have, yes, especially since this is a preliminary plan.
Yeah.
Uh, we will address those as applicable when we come back for final approval.
Yeah, I'm referring to the Gilmore, March 1st, 2016 letter.
Yes, there's that letter and also the, um, Gannett Fleming letter. And they're both referred to in the resolution.
Can we get just a couple, summary, summary of those items, maybe, from, um, from Gannett or from, from Gilmore?
Well, the, I mean, I prepared a resolution, so, you know, the resolution incorporates the Gilmore letter, uh, and the Gilmore letter, uh, has, uh, comments that need to be updated with their final plan submission. This is just preliminary plan approval. Which, I'm not going to go through every paragraph in here. There's some dimensional criteria that are identified, um, things such as sidewalks, pedestrian path width, access and circulation for firefighting. This is a 22-unit, um, multifamily project. So Amy's letter covers that.
Well, I, I understand that it just, we, I understood this to be by right, so I'm, I, I didn't think that we would have that much, and I can't get to my, uh, my space here on, on, on the iPad, but, uh...
I can go through them quickly. I mean, they're...
Oh, yeah, if you would.
I mean, they're technical comments that, that are...
Is there anything, anything significant?
No.
That's what, um, my recollection is similar, that we went through this, uh, we had a caucus phase for this, correct?
Yes.
Right.
And we went through...
I don't remember having any...
Yes, and we, and so I guess what I want to hear is if somebody tells me that it's different than I, but, than I remember it, then tell me. But as I understood it, we addressed the concerns that we had. This is a by-right plan with the exception of, you know, one or two items that are in John's letter, and it's not, it hasn't deviated from what we discussed at caucus.
That's right.
Very good.
I believe there's only one waiver needed, and that is because of the Township Saldo ordinance refers to an outdated, um, trip generation method, and we're using the ITE method, which, uh, I believe Amy agrees is the more appropriate. Other than that, um, we have a by-right plan, and we did discuss it at caucus, and everything is in accordance with that discussion. And it is a preliminary plan. The comments that are in these letters are typical technical type of comments that you would get, um, when converting a preliminary plan to a final plan.
What about the height issue?
The height issue is a will comply. They're just stating that we have to comply with the 40-feet height. At preliminary plan, you typically don't have a building permit plan that, that demonstrates exactly how the height is calculated, so they're just stating, and we're agreeing, that we must comply with that. No waiver or variance being sought.
And I also, at the last meeting, asked about the potential for a single-bedroom units in this?
Yes, I did discuss that with my client. That isn't what we're proposing here. We're not interested in that. Uh, they have the, the program that they're proposing with the 22 units.
What is the right-of-way?
We are showing the, um, the additional right-of-way that, uh, was requested, that will be an offer of dedication.
And what is it, how, how many?
Um, let me see. Do you know, Amy, what you wanted?
Uh, I believe the ordinance had it as 80-foot, and so the half-foot would, half-width would be 40 feet.
Forty feet.
Yes. And I believe that the plan showed either 50 or 60 on the right-of-way. It wasn't really clear. Um, so it would be an additional.
I think it is, I see in Amy's letter, 40 feet, half-width. We're, we're proposing to offer that for dedication that will be shown on our plan. And John Rice has that in the resolution that we would be accepting.
It doesn't say how much, just says the right-of-way. But I'm assuming it's in accordance with Amy's letter.
I looked it up when I heard that there might be concerns on that, so...
Okay. Great, thanks.
I have a question on sidewalks. This whole stretch, uh, from Chamonix Road to the Bateman Gallagher post of the American Legion is sorely in need of modernization of the sidewalk plans or situation. And I noticed from Amy Kaminsky's memorandum that she spends a good deal of time talking about the sidewalks code. So can maybe Amy give me an idea, or George, or Mr. Bremen, of what, what will the finished product look like regarding sidewalks if we approve this?
Well, our plan is, um, I don't believe there's a code-compliance sidewalk there now. I think it's too narrow. This plan that we're going to do is showing a, a new sidewalk on our street frontage in compliance with the code.
Now, is that, Amy, is that going to be, what is the code? ADA is now six feet wide?
It's, it's, uh, four feet wide if you have a passing area of five by five every 200 feet. So when the plan comes in, we would look at it and make sure that it's compliant with ADA and with your code.
And there are utility poles that are, you cite those as a problem.
Yes.
What, what will we do about the utility poles?
We'll see what they present and then ensure that we don't have inadequate facilities.
So would a wheelchair be able to navigate the sidewalk when it's all finished?
After we're done reviewing it? Yes.
After we're done?
What'll happen is they'll, right now, this is being presented, we've provided our comments, so they will take it back to their engineer and re-engineer that sidewalk so that it meets, it's compliant. And then we'll review it and determine whether or not we agree with them. So if there's any problems, then we'll tackle that in final, in the final plans.
Okay, all right. The other question I had was regarding steep slopes... The other question I had was regarding steep slopes, and I see that you do indicate that the slopes vary from 14 to 20%, and then our Director of Community Development, Kevin Kachansky, said that the, the slopes don't actually meet the definition under the code. Oh, Kevin's not here.
I think the, I don't know if he's coming back, but what basically he said is that there's a provision in the ordinance that says a lot like this, which was created before the slope provisions were adopted, is exempt from the slope provisions. So that was the ruling from the zoning officer. And there's, they're just a few areas of slopes, but in any event, that's his determination that he made.
All right, and I see stormwater, we'll, we'll look at that at, at a later date when the final plan is.
That's a requirement of the final plan.
Okay. Parking aisles are, you're going to comply there with the 22-foot parking aisles?
Yes, we pretty much have those, and I think we discussed at the last meeting, there was one spot where we were going to widen it, and we're going to do that and put the dimension on there.
Okay, well, I haven't received any objections from people that live in the general neighborhood. Most of the immediate neighbors are commercial or apartments. I know that the Levin ownership of the Aberwick, Crestwood, and Wessex have filed documents with our Planning Commission protesting the general development. I've read their, I've read their letter, I, I'm not sure that there's much there.
We have worked with them since that letter, and I believe we have addressed their concerns.
That's all I have.
And my words right across the street, I live right across the street, and I've gotten, and I've sent this out several times, and I've gotten one email in opposition, that's it. So I don't, being right across the street there in Ward 3, I haven't gotten much opposition from anybody.
It does seem like a lot of, of housing on a, on a very narrow road frontage, and I did try to take a look at the site this weekend, you can't really even look at it without going into the driveway and looking at it. You can't look at it from behind, it backs up on, on the, on the railroad. 22 just seems like a lot. Is, is 22 the maximum, or is 22 the, you know, under what the maximum could be?
It's under what the maximum could be, there's a requirement, one dwelling unit per 2,100 square feet, so we could have, I think it's 24 units here, 22 are proposed. I did note at the caucus, and I could show it here, this is the R6 Residence District, it's one small part of the township, and the specific purpose is for higher-density residential use. In fact, that's the only use even allowed as a principal use in the R6 district on this property, so we think that it isn't too high, it complies with code, in fact, a little less than code, and it is in the district where that kind of use was thought of, presumably because of the close proximity to, the train station is right there, the St. David Station, it's close to Wayne, so we think it's a good fit, and it does comply.
I have one last item. At some point, I'm hoping to get our Board of Commissioners and staff together and apply for a grant for sidewalk construction along that stretch that I mentioned, from the Bateman Gallagher Post to Chamonix Road. Most of those properties are for-profit owned. There is one, however, which is the American Legion Post, which is a nonprofit. Would, would your client be interested in helping us at some future time with helping the American Legion Post with a sidewalk improvement? We're not allowed to condition our approval.
Right.
On, on a gift like that, but it would certainly be helpful to them, because they're not going to have the money to put in the pot for, for us to build the sidewalk.
I haven't discussed that with my client, except, you know, generally, I did look at the code, there is a provision 250-9 that says every owner has a duty to maintain their sidewalk. We are putting in the new sidewalk on our frontage. I respect that you're saying, you know, you can't make that a condition. I'm sure Mr. Bremen would be willing to continue a dialogue if there was something reasonable he could do to assist the American Legion, I'm sure he would take that under advisement. Is that fair?
That's good, thank you. George, it isn't a matter of maintenance or repair, it's a matter of, at some point, ideally, I'd like to see the entire stretch upgraded to modern standards.
Okay.
And so it would be helping in that regard at the American Legion site. Thank you.
Sure.
Jim, to move this along to public comment, I think we need to get the motion, or the motion to, to move the resolution, and then a second.
I, I will move the passage of the resolution that we have in our packet. I, sorry, I don't have the exact.
2016-48.
Thank you, 2016-48. I move the approval of the preliminary plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any more commissioner comment? If not, time for public comment if there is any. All right, seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Who's, somebody opposed?
No, I said, is anyone opposed?
Is anyone opposed?
No, I saw none, so it passes seven to zero.
You know, as with all these things, it, it just makes me nervous, not, it doesn't make me nervous. I'm always concerned, we have a lot of promises, and then we have to pick through it to make sure that they're complied with, so I just want to make sure that when we, the final plans, there's a lot of stuff to tick off, and it's always easy to promise. We will promise to comply, to comply with all laws, well, that's not a promise, you have to comply with all the laws anyway, so just want to make sure that we get everything and that it's not a, nothing gets, nothing gets missed by, by this group.
Steve, will you alert us to any, something deficient?
I was just going to add, Commissioner, so our, our engineering team will re-review the plans as they come in. If and when it goes to final approval and to be recorded, they get reviewed again, one final time in compliance with the solicitor's developer's agreement and resolution. So yes, we're on that.
Thank you.
All right, we need to, do we need to vote on the resolution? Oh, he stopped the vote, or he's, did?
No, a comment afterwards.
Okay, right.
No, 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 I asked if anyone was opposed. It was seven, it passed seven to zero. Thank you.
All right, there is another item, but I think, Bob, we've already done this, the sketch pa, plan.
Yes.
Presentation of University of Pennsylvania.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
So moving along to Parks and Recreation.
All right, Finance and Audit is me, no report. Public Safety?
No reports.
Thank you. Library?
All right, I have a, I have a report.
Great.
Okay, Library. They had our meeting on the 14th. Just wanted to talk about, the library will be closing at the current location for the renovations starting Sunday, May 15th, and is planned to reopen on Monday, June 6th at the old library building, which I believe is 110 West Lancaster. The hours will be Monday, Wednesday, Friday, 9 to 6, Tuesday and Thursday, 1 to 9, and Saturday, 9 to 5. There are about 46 staff, 11 of the full-time will be staying on, and the, the part-time we will have is temporary furlough that will have the opportunity to come back when the new library is opened up. And there's, there is some, they're still collecting and still trying to raise funds for the library. The total cost estimate right now is right at about $5 million. That's all I have.
Just out of curiosity, are we, are we trying to help, is the library trying to help those people who are being furloughed with getting into another library in the system or anything? I understand there's some folks that are pretty upset about that.
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
I've talked to the library director about that because I've heard from one constituent, and they, they do have a program for, I don't know what the details are, whether it's a severance package or commitment to rehire them, but there is a program. It's not an ideal situation for the employees, but that's the way it is, basically.
Thank, thank you, thank you, Rich. Moving on to old business, no old business, new business. Bob, do you have something on that?
Sure. One item I'd like to bring to the board's attention that we are currently reviewing, and like to show the board, if I can, some pictures. We were made aware of a situation of a project that's taking place now, in which some trees are being damaged. We'll be meeting, Steve and myself and our arborist will be meeting. There have been trees that have been damaged during construction process here, significant. They will be asking for relief to these. Jennifer, if you just want to go through these slowly.
Where is this?
Yeah, where, where is this?
This is on the.
This is Cabrini College, University.
So we are going to be working on this. I can say that based on the review of these photographs that there'll be, that I'll be issuing significant fines in regards to this. I know that they'll be looking at classifying these trees as hazardous trees under our shade tree ordinance to be taken down, but because of the construction process and what has been done to the trees, as we can see through these, that's, that those are not issues that I believe are acceptable. So I just want to make the board aware of this, of what has taken place, and that this will be, the fine will be being formulated with the arborist, and we'll be issuing this shortly.
Bob, something concerns me with this, though. Where's our inspector been?
I, I actually just discussed this with Roger, and our inspector was on that site for the stormwater management, and now they're into the building, the building construction process. But they should, we should be on top of this, too, I mean.
I mean, there's no tree protection.
I see rolled-up tree protection.
Yeah, that works.
From previously, so we need to meet on this, we're pulling the plan to see if tree protection was up, which my assumption is it was, and then it was removed at one point. And we need to find out when that was removed and, and how that came through.
This is, this is another item that also is being reviewed, too, John, so the exact question you're, you brought up is the same question that has been raised, because there's also some questions in regards to some other inspections, too.
This was the construction of the new, wasn't there a gym expansion, I think, on the site there?
I don't recall exactly which building. This came through quite a while ago on the land development side.
It's the Fitzdicks and Athletic Center.
Yeah, Athletic Center, I remember that we had a waiver for the stormwater as well, is my recollection. But I'm sure it's not Cabrini, I'm sure it's a contractor, right, you know, so.
We, we look at the applicant, though, that's.
Thanks, Bob, there's another item up here, the Memorial Blood Drive, who's that?
Yeah, it's, that's for me, yeah, it's, it's run by Dan and Michelle Skolnick, who are Ward 3 residents on South Wayne Avenue. I just wanted to make sure everyone knew, it's on May 10th from 7:00 to 7:00 at the Township Building. If you can, make an appointment, donate, it's a good cause, so again, May 10th, 7:00 to 7:00, if possible, come on out, donate, and the website is CHABlooddrive.org.
Is that on our Township website at all?
It is.
Okay, great, thank you. May 10th, right?
That's correct, 7:00 to 7:00.
Thank you. Now time for public participation. Any, seeing none? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you very much.